The, actually, the drawings that are in that manual have CAD, AutoCAD drawings associated with them. So we could kind of pull some areas and calculate some, some actual water requirements. And that's where we came up with the, the numbers that you see in there. I think it's 12 gallons per square foot per year. So we dropped down, the number down a little bit from what other communities are using, based on a little bit more technical analysis with our climate and everything, so.
Well, thank you very much. I, I figured they weren't pulled out of thin air, but I was just curious where the, the origin was. Thank you. I think some of the other things where you see, what is it decentralized water treatment? You know, those ground boxes and I'm not if you're talking about permeable surfaces, but other ways to divert water and get it back into the aquifer instead of, you know, your, your standard discharge through the surface than to your, your piping and all that. And I mean, ultimately, I guess it ends up in the same place, but I certainly know that other communities use that. I'm not sure what the, well, we get a lot of rain now, at a less frequently, but more intensely. But I, I think all those things should be on the table to look at.
Sure, I'll keep going on Tim's Waterwise chain here. I guess with those Waterwise irrigation systems, there are a couple of bullet points on that very first page regarding the controllers tied to weather applications and then the rain sensors. It's a good idea. I would like to see that more as a suggestion rather than a regulatory. Those rain sensors and the, the weather apps can be bypassed like that. So to regulate that into residential building to demand that homeowners buy those or purchase those and be required to use them when they can, the first day they take occupancy, turn around and bypass them. I just, it doesn't seem something that's in our purview to go that direct into, you know, increasing costs for homeowners. So just a note.
Is that something standard these days too? You know, putting these sensors on irrigation systems? What is the cost of something like that? Do we know?
I don't know the exact cost of rain sensors, but they're not, they're, they're not that expensive in a commercial setting compared to the whole system. In a residential setting, I, you know, it could be considered because the cost of the irrigation system is quite a bit less and a rain sensor is, I, I want to say a hundred or $200, you know, for a rain sensor, something in that range. The, the controllers, a lot of the controllers now are coming with the, you know, technology to tie into a weather app. And to Commissioner Sardar's comment, you know, they could be bypassed, but the, the, the idea is there are a lot of, a lot of new, a lot of the, especially a lot of the commercial consultants are installing those now so that they, because they're not on site all the time. And then they can kind of, the system can shut down when, when weather's coming and, and so on. So it's helpful from that perspective for not watering during a rainstorm. And those, those controllers are kind of standard controllers, so it's not necessarily a, a more costly controller than any other.
Yeah, and my comment was definitely geared more towards residential, not, you know, a $200 sensor on a commercial system is nothing. You can as well put it in because nobody's paying attention to it, so that makes more sense. But for individual homeowners through the course of a three or 400, you know, unit putt or something like that, those costs add up for individual homeowners.
Yeah, well, I've been looking here online. It says anywhere from 20 bucks to 200. There's two above $100, just a quick search, so. Just saying.
Certainly there becomes an element of enforceability in that too. You know, we, we may have some ability on a new construction to have verification that, that these sensors and, and, you know, equipment is installed per regulation, if it, if it was regulatory or even a best practice. After a homeowner takes occupancies, was mentioned earlier, it'd be very difficult for, for staff to enforce that this is what you're going to use. So it really probably does look more like a best practice, except for maybe at the initial installation when we actually have a chance to look at it.
My table's too big, I can't reach the microphone.
So Rebecca knows we're having trouble hearing this, so we gotta speak closer when we're talking.
Thank you.
You wonder why we're all like this.
I used to, um, I don't know if any of this will even be required at some point, when all systems are smart. I think you were mentioning this, where you tie them into the weather apps. And if there's rainfall in that area, bypasses watering days. I mean, I can set that up right now using like Google Home System. So there's so many cool new texts, tech out there for that, but.
Well, I think it makes a lot of sense, but I agree with Commissioner Sardar. I'm not a bunch for regulations and making people do things if you don't have to. We're under water restrictions every summer and I think we're doing pretty well anyway, you know, but it does sound smart. I'm not saying it doesn't, should, probably should be that way. I'm not ready to force a bunch of anything more of what we're already doing.
I mean, I think the down, or the upside of having a, and again, I think it ultimately is going to save you money, especially if you're using a potable watering, supplied watering system. But I, I think that maybe that's up to an individual to decide if that's what they wish to do. But I, I could see value in it myself.
Yeah, and, and these are good, good comments and feedback. Just for clarity, I think what this thread of the conversation started in the standards section of the code, the, the section where we, where it mentions all irrigation systems, shot and system efficient equipment, such as controllers tied to a weather app, rain sensors and/or efficient spray heads. And so it doesn't necessarily, at least as currently written, it's not saying all of these things. It's saying and/or, so one of those three would satisfy that design parameter. But we can continue to, to do some, some more thinking about that, understanding some of the, the comments that we heard tonight. That it's a good idea and there's some difficulty in enforcing, and we don't want to put additional cost on homeowners. So we'll continue to think about that.
The spray heads I do agree with, just for comment, that's, you can't bypass a spray head. And it's minimal cost to do those in a water efficient version versus a non-water efficient version. So I wouldn't have an issue with that actually being written into some sort of regulatory. If you're going to install an irrigation system, it needs to have efficient spray heads, list out the model numbers. Once those are in and operating, nobody really thinks about them at that point.
So maybe we need to, to split the baby a little bit and go for a requirement on, on the spray heads and drip lines and back off on the sensors and, and controllers.
I would approve of that.
Any other thoughts?
Yeah, what about somebody that just wants to use water hose and sprinklers without all buried stuff?
So the, I'm going to repeat it just because, for the microphone, but the question was, what about homeowners or individuals that might want to use a hose and a sprinkler? Obviously, that one's a little bit harder to write a regulation around, but I, I think the general intent, at least as I would look at it, is if they're physically turning on the, the spigot and physically turning it off when they're done, they're monitoring their water use. So they're taking that responsibility as the, the sensor, if you will. And I know we've all been subject to, hey, I forgot to turn off the water, what have you. So there's definitely some opportunity for water loss.
Say, my wife just turns water on and goes and leaves on, just lets it run. You pay the bill.
And you're not on town water though, so that, that's okay. But, but I, I think that those situations exist and we don't want to create something that doesn't allow someone to go out and operate a hose. I think that each homeowner is going to have to kind of take their own responsibility and make sure that they're complying with any, any watering restrictions and use their due diligence to make sure it's shut off. Otherwise, they'll pay for it with their water bill.
Sure, and, and my only thought really was that, impose a regulation that keeps them from doing it the simple way for them. I don't want it written in that you can't do it.
Right, I, I agree with you. I don't think, that's not what we're trying to say. If, if that's how it's reading, we want to take a closer look at it, but the intent wouldn't be to, to take that opportunity away. It's really geared towards when you're installing a new system, this is the baseline that we want to start with. Good comments. Further thoughts on the, on the code side of things?
Yes, I, I'm looking at, I think it's page eight of the, the code 5.04.7. See General Design Standards 2. It says there'll be a minimum of 75% live materials between the front of a single-family residential structure, the curb excluding paved driveway areas. Does this take into consideration like the impact of having trees? I mean, I know there's some standards for having shrubs and trees, but you know, certainly a mature tree. How do you, how do you count that, you know? And I, and I don't know if there's any way to account for that, but I'm, I'm certainly, I mean, you know, personally planting trees seems like a great idea, get shade, it cools the air, it keeps more moisture. But I didn't know if there was any, or maybe I've missed it, any consideration for, for that.
Yeah, so I'll invite Jen to jump up here too, if you have some other thoughts on it, but I'll speak generally at first. Typically, the, the percentage of live material is defined in terms of ground cover. And that's twofold, at least in, from my standpoint. One, there's a, a need and a responsibility to ensure that, that the dirt doesn't blow away or wash away. So there's a, there's a erosion control component to that. And the other is, is aesthetics and maintenance. As, as the country has, has developed, grass has been the preferred ground cover because of its adaptability and ease to grow and maintenance is pretty straightforward with a mower. That's kind of commonplace in our society. I think there's a need to balance what we've all become accustomed to and grown up with. And I've spent my fair share of time mowing and trying to get grass to grow. And I'm rethinking that strategy in the more arid environment of Colorado. I think that's really what maybe the philosophical question that we need to get to the heart of is, what's appropriate for a Colorado and a Wellington landscape? Is it 75% living ground cover? Is it 50%? If we go too far where there's not any living material, then we're going to have a pretty barren, desolate heat island effect. And so we'd really need to balance the, the water needs with that living material percentage. And the living material that we, you know, whatever percentage we land on needs to be sustainable. So drought tolerant species, trees are generally, once established, are generally drought tolerant on their own. They're native species that are better for, for Colorado than some of the nursery stock that is readily available at your, you know, your Home Depots and Lowe's that just blanket order these plants regardless of where they're at in a, in a planting zone. So we really probably should have some conversation about what is that correct percentage for streetscapes for front yards and distinguish residential and commercial settings. That was a little bit long-winded. Jen, did you have anything you wanted to add? Okay.
Answered the question for, for.
Along those same lines too, regarding trees. Just defining the, the town and what people say when they come to Wellington. It's always like, I haven't been to a town like this before with all these huge trees. There's still trees everywhere, it's amazing. So I'm curious how in code we can make sure that is always the case, that we're always a tree town. Not to mention the benefits of having a, 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 a community that's canopied. That's obviously important for energy consumption. But I personally would love to see, as we're reviewing the code and, and doing landscaping and irrigation standards, that there is a very clear directed purpose to ensure that we will always have mature trees in our community forever. I think that should be a huge priority. And I don't think that should necessarily just be for new developing areas, but for existing areas as well.
And, and I agree a lot with Commissioner Kenny. I wanted to, to throw in there that that was a, a recurring comment that we heard during the comprehensive plan engagement and public comments was, why are we not, or why, why do we continue to remove mature trees and not replace them? And the answers have been, a lot of the trees that have been removed in the older part of town here recently were trees that needed to go. They were, you know, had reached their maturity and were starting to become a liability with limbs hanging over structures and roadways. But one of the things that we're proposing, and I, I couldn't tell you exactly which section it's in here without doing some, some scanning. 14, perfect, thanks Jen. On page 14, what we're actually proposing to help start to get at that, that very topic is on a redevelopment site or as part of another project, if a, a tree of a certain size, and there's a couple of parameters, but as trees are removed, requiring replacement of those trees, obviously you can't replace a, a large diameter tree with a large diameter tree, but replacing the tree. And if you aren't able to replace it due to utility conflicts or some other scenario, having an account set up where that redevelopment project or town project can contribute to the funds to replace that tree elsewhere in town to make sure that we can sustain that canopy.
I love it, and that's so important to me. Other benefits I forgot to mention is that tree, large trees slow traffic down through studies, so, so many benefits. But thank you, I, I just want to make sure that that remains a huge priority.
Well, I think there might be something else to that, and I don't know, we're going to do, go over the budget next Saturday. Don't know what kind of monies we've set aside. I mean, because sometimes, you know, some of the last few winters have been pretty brutal and some of the street trees have died. I don't know if they're town trees or whether we have a replacement program, but that certainly might be something to look at. I mean, talking to Jim, it didn't sound like, he sounds like we were losing Jim Miller and not necessarily putting him back in, which is more of a policy budgeting question than a landscape code question, but.
I have a couple of comments on trees. One thing, yes, weather is taking them down a little bit, but we've had kind of a disease infestation on, in Old Town mostly of those Siberian elms. And many of them haven't been pruned or taken care of appropriately. So there are a lot of them coming down now and very dangerous. I don't know how we can encourage and help people to know that pruning and/or spraying our trees is, is really important. Even our main street, we've got some, we've got some problems there on our main street with the trees. Also, in actually, I'd say most of the neighborhoods that have been built in the last 20 years, especially current, the developers are responsible for putting in trees. But the parameters of how they're supposed to do that seem a little vague. And how long that they're going to stand behind and/or replace those. So their neighbors are like, well, that tree is on that side of the sidewalk between the street. Whose responsibility is it? And McClelland, for example, has a bunch of dead trees. And no one wants to really stand up and take ownership to replace those. So I think I'd like to see some real clarity on, especially building new neighborhoods, if that comes up, or apartments that we really are focused on that tree and tree replacement for those. And maybe it's for five years or something. I mean, what's the, what's the timeframe of a tree? If it's going to die after it's planted, is that going to be in one, three or five years? I don't know.
Yeah, good thoughts.
He's right, on McClelland. McClelland, half of them died.
Yeah, so, and just, I'll speak to it high level, but we certainly want to follow up on it and do some additional digging and bring back some, some more thoughts. But generally speaking, Ms. Knack is correct, developers will put in street trees, except for like front yards of homes, those are usually up to the homeowner with their landscape finish. But for stretches along arterial and collector roadways, the developer is required to put in street trees. 40 feet on center is our current standard. And staff will, at least currently, looks at that spacing to make sure there's not a conflict with a light pole or, or an intersection and things of that nature. Once the developer puts a, a street tree in, typically the, the nursery or the landscape contractor who installed it will warranty that tree for one year. So that if it dies in the first year, typically the developer has it replaced by, under their landscape contract. After that point though, as the developer is selling lots and, and turning things over to the home buyers or the HOA, it becomes the owner responsibility or the HOA's responsibility to manage the vegetation for that site. That includes maintenance from the property line to the edge of the roadway. So those, some of those dying trees likely are the responsibility of adjacent owners or an HOA homeowners association. Subject to, I know there's some areas in town during the recession in the mid 2000s where the town stepped in and took over maintaining some of those street trees when the properties were in foreclosure so that they weren't lost. And that maintenance has perpetuated by the town. There might need to be some investigation put into which areas are appropriate for the town to continue to maintain and what areas need to have a conversation with the HOAs or those subdivisions to talk about what the owner's responsibility is for maintenance.
I think a lot of it has to do with adequate irrigation of those trees in the developments. Where the tree dies in six months, they replace it, it dies in six months or whatever, the warranty's gone. And really the sheer fact that it died is because it just didn't have adequate irrigation.
So maybe the issue is as much the irrigation standards as, as the tree replacement, making sure that they, the trees that are required can survive. Great points.
I'll keep going on that if we have a minute, Cody. Please, the newer developments, Harvest and Sage have attached sidewalks. So there are no more street trees, and I assume that's going to be the standard moving forward with new developments. So you're basically eliminating the quote unquote problem, but also the developer responsibility on street trees. I can't speak to Harvest, but Sage's requirement is only one, one and a half inch caliper per front yard in Sage Meadows. So maybe that's a discussion we need to have about upping that to two. I'm not generally in favor of demanding more of the developers and the builders, but trees are important. And if we're going to, to make a push for a tree-lined streets and tree-lined neighborhoods, one tree per front yard, I don't think is going to cut it.
Yeah, people are using trees to make Wellington look like our hometown. I think street trees are essential. So whether or not we could have new properties or new developments without street trees, maybe is the question. I think that's, that's what makes the Old Town feel Old Town, is having those street trees going over the road, which for maintenance is horrible, but that gives you that feel that I think people are really, really wanting to hold on to in Wellington. Also for design standards, I appreciate that each property should have a, a certain number of trees, like we're talking about for Sage right now. But I think unfortunately, a lot of time, the canopy design isn't always considered. So if there's a requirement of one tree, one tree in my old neighborhood, we'd have a big pine tree or some, of some sort. And then a deciduous tree in the front yard. Pine trees are always put on the shortest, the most narrowest side. And those trees are going to have like a 30-foot spread into the driveway. And then the two small sides of the driveway were together. So those two trees had then grown together within like four years. And then meanwhile, a large, my large maple would overlap with the neighbor's next door tree within 10 years. So I think the canopy design plan is just as important as the minimum requirements if you're going for a specific aesthetic. So I was, I would hope that the canopy plan would also be included within the design standards. And it might be, I haven't read it completely, and honestly, I don't know if I would understand it completely if I read that portion, but that was just a consideration I wanted to bring forward. And I think we should always have street trees. I think that should be, for anything new, we should always have street trees.
Thanks, Commissioner Kenny. I think you're, you're on to something there, and I, in my notes, I put the appropriateness of the street tree. I'm hearing at least from you, and I'd like a, a head nodded ahead or, or if you disagree. I think I'm hearing from the planning commission is that the, the canopy, that street tree setting of the Old Town with large canopies and shade is the desired effect for the street tree lawn. Is that, is that accurate? Or, or ornamental's okay? Shrubs and, and other types of plantings appropriate? Or does it depend on the circumstances?
Can I say something? I like as many trees as you want. But when that tree of mine died in my front yard, I cut it down, I never put it back, and I'm thankful. It's real easy to mow now, okay? That's all I'm saying. But to that point, I thought that we were trying to, because of all of our water, that we were also trying to push some zero escape, you know? And get away from that front lawn if, 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 if you want to. If you still have a tree. But, you know, so I don't know, I don't see that, I'm seeing a 75% minimum, that what I read for, uh, live, you know?
Right, and I think what we've, great point. And I agree wholeheartedly with you from a, not picking on, on you or any individual, but we see that trend happen a lot with residential, and we see it with commercial too. When a, when a tree or something dies, they remove it and it never goes back in. There's a, a question there which we've tried to, to start on in the code provisions to talk about what the enforcement is when you have an approved landscape plan. And, and prior jobs that I've had, I've wrote letters to businesses and to subdivisions that said, your trees have died and you're required to replace them in accordance with your landscape plan. That's another enforcement step that I had to take on, but that was the desire of that, or those communities. And that's something that we can consider here as well, knowing that that's maybe unpopular for some. And your other topic about the, the percent of land, uh, living landscape. What we've tried to do in the design manual is strike a balance of the amount of area that's landscaping and relating that to the amount of water required to keep that, that landscape alive. And the balance, I think what we're, we're trying to strike, Jen, jump in here if, if you have other comments. But the balance that we're trying to strike is maintaining sufficient living landscape to keep the area looking nice and have it be attractive landscapes for all of our different types of settings, but reduce the amount of water required to do that. And doing it through adequate mulch, soil amendments, thoughtful irrigation systems and appropriate species for our, for our environment. So the, the design manual that we've drafted or started to work on has some of those typologies for the different landscape settings, including like residential yards, which could be a, a big component of this for our residential growth. Finding that right balance for how much area and how much water is required. So that could be a good segue into the design manual if you had thoughts on, on what those proposed typologies and, and the, how we've started to break it down. If you like or dislike any, any part of that recommended document.
Well, I don't, do we currently have a design manual for landscaping and irrigation or this is? So I think the graphics, I mean, for me, I'm a very visual person. And giving examples I think is great, because if you say high water use, medium, low, what, I'm like, I don't really know what that means. And I don't know if other people do, but certainly one of the things I took away from that was that you indicate the, because of soil, at least around here, I don't know, ours is all clay, right? I mean, you're not going to grow much in that, but you list the amendment for, which is again, we top dressed it, but I guarantee you, we didn't put enough soil in because we're like, oh, we need to add something. So I think having those. So I think having those bits of information to help provide guidance for people. Because I mean, you're gonna to put a lawn in is really expensive and to do a little extra groundwork, a little extra topsoil is is an incremental increase, but it helps guarantee that that what you plant will be healthy and robust. So I do appreciate those types of bits of information.
And people really just don't know, like they have no idea that that's how the only way to make like a low water landscape work is to like significant soil amendments. So I feel like if that's not required, people will have no idea. And unless you do a significant amount of research on yourself or you're trained in some way, there's no way that you would know that. So I appreciate that those are in there too.
Yeah, and that that's certainly why we're, I think more than anything, the design manual is that starting point for someone who doesn't know why or what needs to go into maintaining the lawn. If they've just moved to Colorado from another state. You know, there's certainly other environments that are much more conducive to growing grass and bluegrass than Colorado. So having these, this framework in place helps guide people to the right starting point to be successful. What about the proposed min max type of scenarios that we've at least laid some some groundwork for? It's not final by any means. We can change it as many times as we need to. But having a a minimum amount of of living ground cover, whatever that percentage might look like. And one of the things we proposed was maybe a maximum amount of irrigated turf. So that you find that balance still provides flexibility. The design is largely up to the homeowner or the commercial business. But just setting some limits that will take away a big chunk of the water demand for for a site if it were all bluegrass. Is that minimum maximum approach something we want to continue and keep in this? Or do we want to rethink that?
I think keeping that in offers some flexibility and I think you know, just the research I've done and on my own about the water and this, not just the state, but the region. I think we're gonna need to look at this stuff. I mean, it's, I don't know what other communities are doing. I know kind of Wellington due to its nature, location, and some of the infrastructure things, we're I think in some ways we're maybe ahead of the curve because we're being forced into it where other municipalities like Fort Collins has a huge water portfolio huge treatment capacity where that's not what we're finding here. I think I think looking at how to ration or use a resource intelligently makes sense. I think we have to start that conversation.
I was at CML last week and there were cities there from all across Colorado. And every morning when we would arrive at the hotel, the sprinklers would be on the lawn and spraying everybody's cars. And there were there were some very passionate feelings in it. I saw that. So there is communities there that are in full water restrictions, no watering, no more. You don't get to water your stuff. And then there are other communities like where we were in Westminster that was watering their grass along their parking lots every morning. And there were people who were overwhelmed with I just, I live in the state, but somewhere else. And we just can't, we're at the point where we don't get to choose to do it smarter or better. We just have to stop. Versus where we were visiting somewhere else in Colorado where that wasn't a problem yet. And so seeing the two dynamics of it was and it was, it was watering grass, right? But that is a huge component of that entire community. Everything was dying there because they just could not. They do not have the water for it. So I saw both extremes in one room with people who represents those communities. And it's some, some of those conversations were not friendly, to be honest, of why are you so irresponsible while we're we're the ones suffering. So the fact that we're addressing this now, we're asking these questions now before we have to. I think it's so responsible. So I really appreciate that. And then if we can give everybody best practices so they know how to or what to do before it's too late. I think it's that's huge. So I really appreciate that we're going through this.
I mean, so I'm looking at my clock and I I had suggested maybe 40 minutes and 20 minutes and time goes by fast.
Forty three.
All right, I'll speed it up. But I I think maybe the best path forward from here. Thank you for the for the guidance and the feedback on the landscaping components. I know that's a pretty brief conversation considering how much is in there and what that means to this community. At this point, I would suggest I saw a lot of head nodding. I think we got a general, we're okay with the approach that we're taking. We've got some good notes on some things we want to dig into a little bit further. If any of you have any further comments or suggestions for staff, if you can email those to me, we'll keep a list of of all the the comments that we received from the commissioners. And we'll kind of keep a running tab on on what those comments are and how we've incorporated that or what research we do to to address those. But I do want to move on from landscaping. So from from here, if you can send us, send any more feedback my way in an email, then we'll incorporate it. So real quickly, from the last meeting, we did provide in the packet, we had a a table with all the the land uses identified and some descriptions of those. Really, our focus was to identify the types of land uses that need to be included in our zoning code and to start to describe what those uses mean. I sent you an updated list with the the alphabetical order. I think that's the direction that was asked for to kind of keep it easy to to digest. So we gave you that updated list. If you have any other thoughts on uses that we forgot, uses that you think needs better definition. Just let us know. The next step that we'll be doing with that is bringing it back probably in November with some recommendations on what staff would suggest would be appropriate zone districts for each of those uses. So we'll fill out the table and start putting you know, P for permitted or C for conditional. Maybe some other categories like an S for special use. We'll start to build out that table where where staff thinks those uses could be considered. And then we'll ask for some more feedback there. But for now, again, if you just want to send some comments to staff, did we forget a particular type of land use? Or if you're, if you have questions about one of the descriptions, let us know so we can dig into that and bring it back for the November meeting. So with my remaining time in in the work session, I wanted to move on and do a quick introduction of the new information that we've provided to you. So as I mentioned in the introduction, we gave you two chapters, the general provisions and the application procedures. The general provisions was pretty short. It's, you know, a few pages long, but it's pretty impactful. I'd also think it reads pretty straightforward in terms of what the the zoning code does, what it doesn't do, or excuse me, land use code. And it starts to set the tone for the rest of the document that follows. And then the application procedures, we laid it out in terms of these are all the different types of applications that the town would likely see. And then started to define the steps that would be necessary to review process and ultimately approve or make a decision on those land use applications. You'll notice as as you work through the the application procedures, a lot of the app, a lot of the procedures for various applications are pretty similar. And so you see it start to become a little bit repetitive. We we wanted to take this approach, at least to start to make sure that each one is defined as to how it would operate. We we had discussed with with Logan Simpson and with White and Smith, our our consultants, there might be an easier way to to format that where similar processes are kind of grouped together if they all have the same steps. But we wanted to make sure that transparency, we covered each one completely on the first go around. So that's how we've presented it for your review packet. One of the things that we could really appreciate some some dialogue on is that I handed out just a one page handout at your at your bench today. It's the, it's the table from page 10. Or excuse me, page well, 10 of the PDF packet, but it's page 11 of 116 in the the code. And that page is just a summary table of the different application types that we've identified. And then the going across the the columns where that decision authority lies. So if you can see the the small text apologies, it's the scale is a little tough to read on paper. But the, we have a column for pre-application, which is generally a staff procedure that's meeting with the applicant. So we understand what they're trying to accomplish before it gets in a queue for starting a clock for notices for timelines and and public hearings. And we've just kind of rolled this out as a a test and it's been very, very successful. And the applicants have really appreciated having that opportunity to talk with staff. So we're just kind of trying to formalize that process. And then the the last three columns is defining the authority for whether it's a staff approval or a planning commission approval or a board of trustees approval. So R is for review, D is for decision. Any feedback on this table? This is what we'd like to, this will help frame as we go back through and edit and revise the procedures. We've laid it out, the the text generally consistent with this table plus or minus, we may have missed one. But are you generally okay with the direction that we're proposing in terms of which entity reviews and which entity makes the final decision? We are suggesting that some of the, some more of the the simple type of applications could be delegated to staff to make the final determinations on. And we can absolutely define some parameters under which those would be acceptable. But ultimately with the goal to to ease some of the burden on the planning commission to consider a heavy agenda and putting applicants through a public hearing, public meeting process, if it's a pretty straightforward and simple request to let staff make that administratively within some defined parameters. Any thoughts or comments on how we've laid out the the table and the procedures?
I think this, the summation of this table, pardon me, is great because you know, I'm sure from some of the stuff from planning side, I would be like, oh, we do which part? So this is helpful for me. I can speak to that. So I think it, I think it's great.
I can see where the administrative side maybe would need a little more clarification on what may or may not be approved by you guys possibly, but I'm not sure at this point what that would be, but.
Yeah, sure. We can, we can certainly start to to do a little bit more of that and flesh out what those parameters might look like.
I mean, right now, we kind of have a parameter guideline for you that probably works in there.
Yeah, and we definitely thought about that. We want to continue to to make sure that we we build trust and can do that administratively. And if we need to define it a little better, we've kind of had kind of some verbal guidance for for staff to do a few things administratively. Some of these things on here and the, I'll give you an example, lot line adjustments, easement adjustments. You're shifting a property line from from, you know, three feet in one direction. And so you're only changing the relationship between the two properties. It doesn't create a new lot. And as long as one of those parameters would be that all the other requirements would still have to be satisfied. So you couldn't violate, you couldn't move a lot line where it would create deficiency on a setback requirement, for instance. So as long as all the other requirements were still satisfied, does the planning commission really want to hear a minor subdivision request to move a lot line two feet?
Yeah, because we think at least 18 questions would make that meeting last longer.
Exactly. And so that's kind of what we were thinking that there's, there's probably some of these applications that are so straightforward that it really doesn't warrant a full public meeting to to make it to to basically to go through all the 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 effort and the notices that cost money and cost the applicant money to do something that meets all the requirements.
Adding certainty to the process and making it clear to understand is so important, I think. I do have questions why or if this is not complete for the special use exception and the vacation.
Yeah, those those were comments that that I threw in at the last minute and we didn't have a chance to to fully get those included, but we'll update those. I will tell you from my experience, all three of those would be planning commission review and probably board of trustees approval.
Yeah, I was gonna say the most on all of those.
Yeah, we just, we didn't. Our consultants were were very good about getting the edit in there for me based on my comments. But they definitely need to be included in this and probably all of those would require a public hearing as well.
And then a lot of the administrative ones are changed to plans that are under a certain percentage, correct, of the original approval?
A lot of it in terms of what we've
Site plans usually.
Yeah, and that's kind of, some of that's keyed off of what we currently have in the the existing land use code. Staff has the authority to do administrative approvals for anything that's 10% or or up to 10% of any measurable standard. And that language is kind of problematic for us. Not the percentage so much. That's pretty easy to define. The challenge we run into is one, what if it's not measurable?
Yeah.
You can't really measure a tree species and you can't really measure a paint color or a building material. If it's, hey, we couldn't get split face CMU, can we use brick veneer instead? So there's, there's some elements in there that that could maybe be defined a little bit better as to what staff's authority is that isn't within our current code provisions.
Okay, yeah. So whatever those would make the most sense, I would love those to either be as asterisks or something to determine that within this administrative section. But if you're saying better define those, then that's exactly what would be helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Other thoughts or suggestions? Okay, did we give you enough information in in one meeting? There's, there's more to come and we haven't even gotten to the really exciting stuff yet.
The really exciting stuff, Cody. What's really exciting stuff?
You know, I I love sign code. Wireless towers. Yeah, there's, there's a lot of really fun.
Getting exciting.
Yeah. There's
For sleeping.
Yeah. Subdivision regulations.
What was that one?
Subdivision regulations.
Roll into the November meeting right now.
Yeah. Well, I can tell you're excited. We, so we are working on some of those provisions and we'll be rolling those out. Our our goal is to to again, get those out to you. At least for you get the information in your hands and then present it in November. We obviously love feedback, but if there's obviously, it's a lot of information to digest and there's some dialogue that has to go along with it. So if you're okay with this approach of here's the information in a presentation, take it home, digest it, think about it and bring comments back to the following meeting. If you're okay with that kind of rolling process, that's how we'd like to proceed as a staff.
I really appreciate the transparency so we can track the progress as we're going. So I think that's a great choice.
Thank you. I have 6:23 on my watch, so we've got a couple of minutes before the next meeting or the regular meeting starts. If you guys want to grab another refreshment, please do.
I do say there was an update from Ms. Garcia about the trees on McClellan. Apparently they're supposed to be replaced this month. So I think they're waiting for a go date from the landscaping company. So apparently hot off the press.
That was quick. Good work.
Thank you.
Did I see how to get to the webinar? But I didn't find the link.
Here, I can, I can show you where it's at too. So the the link was in the email that Patty sent out, unless you didn't get the email.
Well, let's see, I've been, I've been looking back and forth if this thing will work. I went to this page.
Okay, so you made it here.
Yeah.
So if you go to the planning commission
Yeah.
Then you have to click on the the current date.
Okay, maybe I didn't go far. Your screen is dusty as mine.
That's, that's kind of the issue.
Occupation, but it's just residential.
But, um, it's just residential, like you're allowed to have a business in your home.
Doing something on Friday, which is when it showed up, and so I didn't see it until Sunday.
Having no one living there.
How do you start the balance between wanting this community to be what?
Yeah, there was something I was looking at on this also. And pardon me, you've got something else to do to get ready for the meeting, I'm sure. It's just that, uh, looking at it and it said not to use any plastic underneath the, the ground cover. But polypropylene is something plastic too, so.
Something makes sense.
And, and if you define it that way, if something new comes out in the future, does it block it from happening? I did my house, landscape fabric, two layers of it and the weeds still went through it. But when I also did my house, uh, this was twenty plus years ago. I had a guy come in and rototill my whole lawn and then he put down six yards of cow manure and rototilled all that in. And then we planted seed and put down fertilizer and started watering it. That was in May of two thousand and two. And in a week I was mowing twice a week. Yeah, and I was using a drought resistant, low watering rye fescue. So that we wouldn't eat up a lot of water, but man, it wore me out.
And one yard, one cubic yard. Yeah, you should. It'll never happen. Ten, ten neighbors down my street, they didn't rototill that one, they didn't rototill that one. That one's got a huge hole right in the middle where they didn't rototill. Probably something sitting right there when they did rototill it and they didn't move it. My backyard got that going again this summer. One time, just turn the hose on and let it go.
They were trying to get the door open and then the neighbor's yelling at them like, do you have permission to get in there? They're like, their house is on fire. So I think it took a while for people to notice.
I'm gonna wait. Minute here for Linda. I guess they don't think I'm making the meeting over fast enough.
Current, there could be a future when we incorporate them into a redesign or a street improvement.
Man, soccer at here. Oh.
And it should be both, right? I mean, that's long-term strategy. If we're doing a sidewalk repair and replacement and we have to remove trees.
Five thirty meetings. Well, we don't have meetings at five thirty normally.
I mean, what's this thing I do?
Could be.
Sorry, we're late.
All right. Where'd my paperwork go? Are you ready? Okay, we'll call the meeting, the planning commission meeting for October fourth, two thousand twenty-one. Call to order. I'm reading the wrong thing here. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kenny? White House?
Here.
Here.
Connect?
Here.
Sardar?
Here.
Friedrichs?
Here.
McCaffrey?
Here.
Any additions or deletions from the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Public forum? Items not on the agenda?
Peter, downtown court, um, I submitted a question in that forum. And I was just wondering if you received it and when it was going to be addressed.
I, is, is that the extent of your comments? Okay, I have not received it. I'll look into it and see if, if it's stuck somewhere in process.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Christine. All right, consideration of minutes. Do we have a motion to approve minutes from the last meeting?
Motion to approve, meeting's September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one.
I'll second that.
Second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
White House?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Connect?
Yes.
Sardar?
Yes.
Friedrichs?
Yes.
McCaffrey?
Yes.
New business. Site plan review, lot six and seven, Meridian first subdivision, multi-tenant mixed use. Mr. Bird?
Chairman, I am going to let, uh, Liz Young-Winney, uh, start this one. She was the primary lead on communications for this project and she prepared the staff report, so I'm gonna let her take it.
Go on, um, I have to Zoom kicked up.
And we will be, if you have your, uh, if you're logged into the Zoom meeting, um, with your laptops and/or it'll be on the screen behind you, we are going to use a few of the presentation slides, um, so they'll be available for you.
Takes a while to get to that section of the packet.
It's quite far down there. I think we're starting, the presentation information is on ninety-eight. And I think the staff report is sooner than page ninety-eight. I don't know what page it's on, sorry.
I think it's sixty-five for staff report.
Thank you, it's page sixty-five for the staff report. Can't get this to do what I wanted to.
I know in the past, there's been a little bit of a lag between the presenter's screen and the, the actual screen, so give that a little time to.
There we go.
There it is.
Um, so this is a site plan review for lot six and lot seven in the Meridian first subdivision, which is like where the bank is. Um, so it's a multi-tenant mixed use building. The applicant is here, Fuad. Um, as Wellington Business Court LLC, as well as one of the agents working on the project, Rob is here as well. Um, so this project is something that we've been talking with Fuad for a while about the project. Staff is generally excited about it. Um, we think it's a really cool idea. And as you guys can, can see from the general location, it's a great spot. Um, it's one of these kind of entryway locations for, for a business. And so it could really help kind of welcome people into the town. Um, as far as like a commercial development, it's got this location that's really wonderful for the blooming subdivision there. But also for the school traffic, um, and providing some options for students in the future, if there's ever open campus options. And we'll talk a little bit about the different uses, um, but it's generally what we've heard from folks is that they'd like to see more retail. They'd like to see more offices in, in the downtown area, um, and they'd like more restaurants. And so this building really meets a lot of those needs, which we're excited about. Um, some of the background information before we start kind of diving into the nitty gritty. Um, it's zone C three, which is the high rate, highway commercial. Um, these are all uses that are applicable for that zone district. As I just explained, it's a multi-tenant mixed use, so a variety of square feet for a restaurant, retail, as well as office. The drives in the, the subdivision are all private. Um, so that's something to take into consideration. They're not public roads. And the property is just over one and a half acres. The current application is looking for a site plan approval to construct this multi-tenant corn shell building. It's been reviewed by engineering and those comments have been provided to the applicant as well as reviewed by Wellington Fire Protection District. Um, and those have also been provided to the applicant as, as well as their agents. Um, just kind of a quick overview, um, there's, there's a lot to chat about, so I'm gonna go pretty quick through um, my slides so that we've got an opportunity to talk as well as hear from the applicant, um, if desired. So generally the site does meet the code as well as the application checklist that, that we use to share with applicants when they're developing their site plan, um, this, this checks those boxes. Um, there's some concerns that staff has. None of these things are like severely detrimental, right? They're all overcomeable, um, but it, it does require quite a bit of um, thoughtful consideration for how is the site going to function as a whole. Um, and that, that's a lot of what we're hoping to have a conversation around today. Um, so just to kind of run through it, there's some questions around the parking lots, maybe being underparked. Um, there's some questions about circulation. Some of these are pretty minor, just, um, a little bit of extra clarification for the plans. Um, the lighting plan, the photometrics, um, could probably be updated to address some over and under illumination levels. The landscaping plan is missing some site trees and there, there might be a larger conversation there as well. Um, the irrigation plan was missing, um, it was checked as being um, something that was sent, and so we're just not sure if maybe we missed it or it wasn't sent in the, the way that we receive packages now is digital, so we just weren't sure if maybe it just didn't get included. Um, but that's not anything that's like detrimental to being able to review, um, the site plan from a staff perspective. There's some operational questions regarding the trash enclosure. Um, and then there's some questions around the architecture and design elements um, to try to create some more consistency with the subdivision. Again, a lot of this, staff really sees this as a, as a great opportunity to define, um, some parameters for what buildings in this subdivision could look like. Um, and again, it's, it's got this awesome location where it could really set the stage nicely for, for folks that are entering Wellington from highway one. Um, so just to kind of talk through some of the parking, um, and again, I'm gonna try to keep this high level just because I don't want to take so much time um, talking through specifics. Um, but I wanted to highlight this parking island. This is something that during our conceptual review meetings with the applicant, um, they decided, um, from some staff comments and concerns about pedestrian flow through the, the sou- the southern parking lot, um, which is where most of the parking is. Um, and just trying to make it a little bit more safe for pedestrians who are traveling through. Um, so they added this pedestrian island, which we like, um, and think really helps improve the pedestrian circulation. So for people that are using that parking space and then additionally, not just navigating the parking um, lot, but also then crossing the road. Um, and since this is the largest of the, the parking areas, we thought it was important to add a little bit extra for pedestrians there. Um, and as a result, this did eliminate a parking space, um, which we don't think is a huge ordeal. Um, one of the things that is a little bit difficult with the, the parking is that the diagonal spaces are too small, um, and don't meet the code, which could actually pretty significantly impact the parking by, uh, a few spaces. Um, so that's something that we wanted to bring to everybody's attention. Um, additionally, and this is what I was saying with the circulation, there's just a little bit of extra clarity that could be added to the circulation information, just to confirm. Again, these are private drives and so they are meeting, um, what we would normally look at. Um, but there's a little bit more wiggle room, I would say, from the standards. Um, circulation from, um, like the, the most northern side of the site, so the parking lot that is the farthest north um, of the site. We have had some conversations and, um, the applicant and their agents have been quite responsive um, to providing us some information about trash operations. Originally, the trash wasn't located in this, in this area. Um, and we had some conversations and, and they did some follow-up work with, um, trash providers in the area to confirm that it is possible to have this much trash for a, a tenant mix like this. Um, and that it would be adequate. So we're really happy to see that the applicant was able to be responsive to that comment. Um, we do have some kind of questions and concerns around the circulation for this area. Um, staff had previously suggested a loading and unloading, uh, zone, um, provided somewhere on this north parking um, to be provided for deliveries. Though, the way that the building is currently structured, there's nine tenants. Um, and again, it's a mix of uses, so retail, office, as well as restaurant. Um, and we think there could be a lot of deliveries through the day. Um, and, and right now the deliveries would probably have to just block the road. Um, again, these are private drives, so it could create from a functionality standpoint, a challenge over time as the subdivision continues to build out. Um, all, all the parcels in this area are also zone C three. Um, so that's something that we just wanted to put out for consideration and conversation tonight. Um, the photometrics, this is a really tricky one, um, because there's, the property lines get so small. Um, with the, the size of the building as well as the beautiful courtyard, um, and the parking arrangements, it can be probably a little bit tricky. I'm not a, a lights expert, um, by any means, but I do know how to read these plans decently well. Um, and it appears that it may need to be reevaluated. There's some areas where the, the property line is significantly over what our code would, would like. And then there's some areas where it's significantly under what we would like to see for a pedestrian area and access. Um, so it might be something to, to further consider. There's some areas and in the staff report, I alluded to this a bit. Um, but there's some areas that it might not be super detrimental, as you all have seen on other site plans. Um, if there's a sidewalk right there, it's, it's not going to be the end of the world if it's a little bit over what the code is requiring. Um, but on this west side of the building in particular, we're seeing illumination levels that are upwards of like four, um, which is pretty, pretty high for the property line. Um, there is a sidewalk right there and again, it's going to be developed next door to probably be something similar-ish. Um, some, something within the C three, so it could be a benefit, um, but it's something to just think about holistically as, as we move forward with our conversations tonight. Um, the landscaping, so staff has some questions, um, that we, uh, have presented and talked to the applicant about regarding the open space calculations. We're just not sure, um, how that number was calculated. Um, and then like I said, the irrigation plans are needed. From a code standpoint, and this, again, I'm gonna try to just kind of explain this high level, um, which can be difficult. From a code standpoint, there should be twenty-six trees at a minimum on this site and there's nineteen proposed. There's a couple of different ways that you can exchange trees, um, and it could result in two-ish missing site trees. Um, and again, site trees is, gets a little bit subjective because parking lot trees could be considered site trees. And, um, it, it can be a pretty elaborate calculation, but the, the thing to really drive home here is that from the code standpoint, there should be twenty-six trees and there's nineteen. Um, and in the staff report, there's some, um, kind of ideas around how we could capture some site trees into that number, um, to help the applicant out. Um, but there are some concerns with it and the, the main two are that there's two parking lot trees within the site triangle. Um, and again, the site triangle is that space when you're exiting or en- entering an, an access point that you want to be able to see very clearly. Um, so that when you're making a turning movement, you're not accidentally crashing into someone else. Um, whether that's a car, a person walking or riding their bicycle. Um, and then the other consideration is that the courtyard, um, may create a heat island. And that's something that staff is a little bit concerned about, um, from the standpoint of it, it could be this awesome space, right? Who doesn't want to sit outside and then, and eat their lunch, um, and enjoy that for dinner or whatever? Um, and also have a nice space if you're an employee, um, at this, at this building as well. Um, but it, the way. But the way that the landscaping is set up, we think it might be really hot. We just had a really hot summer and so maybe a little bit jaded on that. But you know, it's 85 today and we're in October. So we're having multiple months of really high heat and being able to accommodate a courtyard from a usability and functionality standpoint without much landscaping could be really hot for customers and employees. And then some of the trash concerns, like I said, we talked with the applicant and their agent and they did let us know that they spoke with trash companies and that they are able to do multiple pickups per week to accommodate the size of the trash bins that are going to be there. And they also moved the trash to make it more accessible for a trash hauler, which is great. One thing that we noticed is that it would be really difficult for someone who was working there to be able to access the trash enclosure. So much so that they might have to use the ADA ramp and then go out onto the street to be able to effectively get to the trash bins, which, you know, in a bad situation results in people tossing trash over the edge, which could be a big mess and not very attractive. Additionally, from a trash concern conversation, there's no grease collection needs that are identified within the spatial consideration for the trash enclosure. And then one of the requirements too is that the trash screening must also match the building materials. And it's a little bit unclear to staff whether or not that's been accomplished. The architecture within the subdivision, this is typically something that we look at for, does the architecture of this building fit? These are the two buildings that currently exist in the subdivision and you can see they're quite different. This is what's proposed. So we've got a corrugated metal pitched roof, a rectangular building, some decorative columns, a stucco-like primary material. And then a stone wainscot around a portion of the building, also large windows, which is reflected in the other buildings and this tower with the windows and the walls. So this building could really be the building that starts to create some themes for this neighborhood and create some consistency among design elements to really help the rest of the development as it comes in over the next several years. And so the staff recommendation and assessment. Like I said, we've coordinated quite a bit with the applicant as well as our agents on addressing staff comments between, you know, when we saw a submission and did a conceptual review, as well as some informal consultations over the past several months. A lot of the things that we kind of are highlighting as concerns are not things that are unachievable. They could be overcome. And part of it is, you know, looking at the whole site and the functionality from an operational perspective and what the town wants to see, as well as what the planning commissioners would like to see with a site like this, because it does have a lot of potential. And we think that that's something that's important to state. Staff does support this project. There's a couple of questions that we still have that we can work out tonight. And so the recommended motions for the planning commissioners to consider are stated in the package. Well, I think it goes to Bert.
Is there any questions?
I have one question.
Yes.
At two points, you mentioned the overall site. Are you referring to specifically this parcel we're looking at? Or in the bigger picture of the entire park? That, because there's multiple parcels out there, correct?
Yes.
So which were you referring to? Just operations just around this one area or the whole area?
Um, both.
Okay.
Right. Because we're looking at a subdivision. So we want to take into consideration that this is all Zone C three. There's going to be other buildings similar to this one, maybe smaller, maybe slightly different. But the whole subdivision over by the Meridian Trust on those empty lots is Zone C three. There's several parcels over there. So we're looking tonight specifically just at this site. But we do want to be thoughtful for the consideration that there's going to be multiple other parcels in the future that will be developed as well.
Thank you.
When you say there's 83 parking spaces, potentially 82, what is that giving per retail space versus restaurant?
Um.
How about those numbers?
Good question. So in the staff packet, in the staff report, under the parking section, which is number five, there's 4,000. So the way that they defined it for now is that there's 4,000 square feet of restaurant, which means that there's 40 spaces required. That's using our code for one space per 100 square feet. And then there's 5,100 square feet of retail. So that would be 26 spaces required. I think here there may have been a rounding down or it may be because of the parking island, like we said, or not the parking island, the pedestrian refuge island through the parking lot. And then there's 5,065 square feet of office, which would yield 17 spaces.
If I could jump in for, excuse me, for just a minute. I think it might also be important to just reiterate that right now, this is a multi-tenant space, but the tenants aren't yet identified.
Right.
And so what the applicant has proposed is that based on the available parking in this design, they're proposing to restrict the amount of uses in those tenant spaces to what Liz just read in the staff report that 4,000 for restaurant, 4,000 square feet for restaurant, 5,100 for retail and just over 5,000 for office. That percentage of each of those use types meets the available parking as opposed to designing the amount of parking spaces for a known square footage for a tenant. So the disadvantage is we don't know yet who the tenants are to know how, you know, if it's a restaurant.
And I wouldn't even have brought it up, but it was brought up in there. But 82 might not be enough.
Yeah.
So versus 83 might not be enough. I don't know.
Right. And I think the main reason we bring it to the planning commission's attention is that based on what's currently proposed, that calculation could work. As we all know, there's a couple of successful restaurants in town that run out of parking real quick. And had we known that those were going to be restaurants at the time, there might have been a requirement for additional parking. And so not knowing what the tenant mix will truly be, or as things change over time, shorting the parking could be a challenge that the town would have to look at down the road.
That number for restaurant is acceptable?
I'm not sure. I understand.
The 100 square feet or whatever parking for 100 square feet is?
So your current code requires one parking space per 100 square feet of restaurant area.
Okay.
So what the applicant is proposing is that they would have a maximum amount of 4,000 square feet for restaurant use to stay within their available parking. As opposed to if, I don't think it would make a lot of sense, but if, say, all nine or all eight or nine tenant spaces were proposed as restaurants, this would be severely underparked.
Right. Okay. Do they have, do they have the ability to expand that or no?
To expand the parking?
Parking out of room, is that it?
Not within the current lot. The proposed site plan that's in your packet tonight, they've gone property line to property line.
Okay.
Yeah, to maximize the available space.
Okay. Liz, did you also mention that the diagonal parkings are short as is, as it's conceived right now as well?
Yeah.
So how many do they lose if those bump out to code-regulated parking spaces?
I didn't do the calculation.
You said significant though.
Well, it's, I think they're listed at eight feet and a half here or there, which is about a foot and a half under what the width is supposed to be. And there's several parking spaces there, so they could lose four or five.
Another four or five on top of already being short one.
So you could be down to 75 or 76 parking spaces?
We would have to do the math.
Okay. I mean, is that even a decision factor in this, based on what we're talking about? Is parking even a consideration for a site plan?
It's a major element of your site plan approval.
We always skip around it.
Yeah, I think in most of the situations that the commission has seen here, at least when I've been here, the parking conversation was pretty straightforward because it was a known tenant. It was a known use and we could easily do the calculations. I think that's what we're pointing out here and working with Fawad is the proposed building footprint would accommodate up to 14, what was the total square footage? 14,000 square feet of usable space. But within that, we don't know if it's, you know, a retailer, restaurant or an office. And so we can't, we don't have known quantities to apply the commission's parking standards to. The assumption is that the uses will be restricted based on available parking, which is extremely difficult from an enforcement standpoint. And once tenants, a couple of years down the road, maybe there's some turnover. Here's a vacant space. I want to put in a restaurant, but it's underparked. Are we going to say no to that restaurant? And those are the things that we're looking at. And the best time to catch those and make sure that they're done right is that's your very initial site plan review.
There's a large quantity of parking spots. And I almost feel like it's more detrimental to skinny those spots to have the amount than to maybe make them bigger on like a safety standard, a safety point too. So we're getting in big vehicles and trucks like that. You know, if we were looking at a a location that, you know, has three parking spots and they want to do a 4,000 square foot restaurant, then obviously that's not going to work. But there's already quite a bit of parking laid out on this. So I would just, my feeling is if we can make them bigger and still be okay, rather than the quantity, the right amount.
I mean, I think having unrealistic, I mean, if they don't meet the code and they're eight feet, eight and a half feet wide, they're going to put a truck, a pickup truck in there. I mean, I don't think narrowing them to hit a number makes any sense because it's not functionally, it's or import cars only, hatchbacks only. I don't know what it is, but yeah, I don't think that's a realistic approach.
Are any other questions? For me? Because I think there's time for a discussion, right? I don't know if the applicants have anything that they want to comment on as well.
You guys, anything to say?
I'm curious about something.
Sure.
I haven't been able to digest it yet in looking at these drawings on this small computer screen. And so I'm curious what happens with rain runoff and snow runoff? Because this last winter I ran into an occasion where the parking lots had turned into ice skating rinks. And I didn't want that to happen to our citizens here.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. So engineering, the engineering department or the engineers in Public Works reviewed, they reviewed the drainage. And they did provide comment letters and have been working with the applicant's engineer on the drainage as far as where the water goes, when there's runoff from snow or whatever. One thing that we always try to look at and talk with folks about is when you've got a large building, where's the shadow going to be? In this situation, most of the parking is on the south side of the building, which is a benefit for the customers because it's likely to be less icy than the north side of the building, which has the least amount of parking spaces. So it is something that we do consistently talk with our applicants about when we're talking with them at conceptual review point. But that's a great point. So thank you.
And real quick, from a macro standpoint, the drainage from this site was contemplated in the drainage pond that's just south of the existing townhomes. So all the drainage eventually reaches that existing basin and it has capacity to accommodate development.
Okay. Any other questions for me?
Yes, I have one more. I have one more, Bert.
Oh, you have one more? Okay.
Allowed to consider any of the street parking for this type of a building or it has to be on the property? Because there is quite a bit of curb and sidewalks around that property. Is that considered at all in this?
So in our code, we specifically look at the off-street parking. Since it's a private drive, I don't know. I don't think there would really be enough available circulation space though, because when we're looking for circulation aisles, we want 14 feet. And Wellington Fire Protection District also needs a specific amount of space for the turning radius for their vehicles too. And I think this accommodates that just enough. So I don't think there would be any additional option for off-street parking or on-street parking in this situation.
Yeah. And I can speak to that because Liz is exactly right. It really comes down to the emergency access and circulation requirements. The fire district requires 26 feet clear in the fire code. That's from obstruction to obstruction. And these private streets were designed and built at 28 feet between the curbs. So a parked car would obstruct that. So it has to remain clear.
Any other questions? Okay. I'm going to sit down for a few.
Thank you, Liz.
Would the applicant like to come up and share with us?
My name is Fawad Faur. I live at 7759 Kit Fox Drive. We've lived in Wellington.
You have to get a little closer to the microphone. They won't be able to record it.
So I'll start over. Fawad Faur. I live at 7759 Kit Fox Drive. And we've lived in Wellington for the last 21 years. So as Liz mentioned, we had similar thoughts and excitement about the project as we just discussed it as a family. We've seen our town grow over the last 21 years and we personally think that there is a need in our community for some retail office and some more choices for restaurants. So we like the idea of using that site for, you know, the purpose that Liz explained. And we like, even though Fort Collins is not really a long distance from here, we like the idea of having these options for our community right here in Wellington. I think there is a need for that. So this is really the motivation behind the project. We think also, hopefully it's a business idea and it's going to have a good return on investment that our family is going to put into that place. So we tried and I really appreciate that. I read the comments and appreciate, you know, the comments that Liz shared with all of us here. Definitely, we have some work to do to continue to work with the planning department, Cody, and Liz and the team. So we'll do that. But our heart and vision is into putting together a building that is attractive, that has good architecture, aesthetically appealing. And my family and I think everyone I talked to really liked the idea of having the plaza and the court there. Really think it would be cool for us as a community to have an area where people can just sit out and and grab something to eat or just, you know, have a gathering place and sit down and enjoy the area with the new middle high school that we have coming up. I think it's ideal, you know, the high schoolers can come and also have a gathering place where they can sit down. So I envisioned that we would have tables out and we need to figure out how to address the southern exposure. The nice thing about the southern exposure is that, you know, you have the building in three sides. And as we all know, it gets really windy here in Wellington. So you're a little bit protected there. But to address the heat element of it, I think, you know, one of the items we can consider, and there may be other things we can do, can consider with Rob, adding some shade trees. But we also can have tables with umbrellas so that people can have, so one of the things that we can do. So we're excited about it and I hope you are as well. As I mentioned, we have work still to do, but hopefully it will meet your approval. If you have any questions for me.
I think it's great. I think you got a great idea. And I know the staff will work with you just right, but I just think I'm excited about the project myself. Couldn't have picked a better location either. Great location.
Awesome. Thank you.
I think it's great too, Fawad. It's good to see you coming out in the town and yeah.
Oh, thank you.
Questions for Fawad to answer?
I guess one of the parts, they talked about the concerns about having a delivery area. And I guess that's one of the things I wonder about because obviously there's, I mean, kind of looking at this whole park, the whole development, I wonder about congestion, deliveries, where does that really occur? So I was just, I mean, I think that's something I would have, I guess I have some concerns or questions about how that works out because is the street to the north internal to the park or is that back up on the townhomes?
The, it might be helpful, I guess, we're not stranger anymore. I was going to say we can go back to the location map. But the answer to the question is that the circulation aisle immediately adjacent to the lot that Fawad's proposing is an internal to the subdivision. The the townhomes have a circulation aisle that accesses those garages as well, but that's not the one that is on this site plan.
One comment I would make related to your concern, I mean, this is something that we've discussed with with Cody and Liz and they brought up early on as we shared with them the conceptual ideas we have for the place and provided some good feedback on it. One thing we've done is we we've we've visited with the traffic engineer who who did the traffic engineering for the subdivision, we've we've the same engineer also did the traffic engineering for the site that we've developed. And and they've 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 given us some feedback that based on the use for that we have for the project and the traffic engineering that he's known for the subdivision that a dedicated zoning and loading and unloading area would not would not be needed. With that, with that said, we've discussed the possibility, we haven't placed that there just based on the comments back from the traffic engineer. But one idea that we've discussed is that the 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 deliveries can happen at certain times of the day, we can allocate some of the parking for designated time in the day for the loading and unloading and allow space then for sizable trucks to park in these spots to unload and unload during these times of the day. And when typical deliveries are not happening during the day, these parking spot then can be used for customers or or employees to utilize.
Thank you.
What what about the trash container? Is that a concern to you at all? I mean, I see the people from the restaurant having to carry stuff a long ways, it looks like, to get to the trash.
Yeah, no, it's it's a good point. And actually, a a couple of things, because one thing I I just noticed as Les spoke that I haven't considered before, and I think it's it's a proposed change here, I think would be straightforward and and hopefully will address that concern. But there was initially a bigger concern about just the the size of the trash enclosure and the trash and recycling bins that we have there and that it would accommodate the the need for multiple tenants in the area. So I I I contacted Gallegos or Republic now is their new name and and discuss this and 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 they actually wrote a letter to confirm that the size we have for the specific allocation of businesses that we talked about, you know, the four thousand square foot restaurant and so on. Would be sufficient with two pickups a week, but they've also added that they would be able to do more than two pickups a week if needed. So from a a capacity point of view, I I feel comfortable with it because a as an owner, the last thing I want to want to have, you know, when you invest in a beautiful building and everything, have trash that's overloading everywhere. But the point about circulation, I did not think about before where people are coming to just put the trash in in the area and the entrance right now is on the street side where the trash pickup is going to happen. And I think one thing we can probably do is is just have an access door in the back where the employees and come in and just open that door and put the trash rather than just throw it over or have to go around. So that's my thoughts on that right now.
Sounds like you're thinking about it.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just one real quick. Liz had put into the staffer report under the architectural design standards section about just a line about decreasing the size of the building and reducing the number of tenant spaces. Is that something you guys are willing to consider? At all, or is that kind of a last resort? We need to explore all other alternatives before you would consider decreasing the size of it.
I can tell you, and I'll I'll directly answer your question, but I just want to give you a little bit of the history. The building, as Cody and Liz know, was significantly bigger. So we've already I mean, significantly, I want to say probably twenty-five percent bigger or something like that. I need to go back and look at the exact numbers. So we've we've reduced the size of the building to 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 address some of the comments that that, you know, we've discussed with with Cody and Liz and and the building department. So right now, I I want it to be a last resort. Because we're at a place where I want to make sure that when all said and done, this is going to also make sense from a financial point of view with all of the investment that we're putting into place and 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 just to be frank, the the square footage is 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 key to that.
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned finances. I guess part two to that question is, as far as individual tenant spaces, rent wise, are they going to be competitive for Wellington or is this going to be instantly the most expensive piece of property in town? Because we kind of have some difficulty filling existing office and retail spaces.
I I I would want to do what makes sense for the market. So, you know, you know, my position on it, I don't care what they're using in Fort Collins if I can't rent the place. So I I I definitely want to have price. I mean, I haven't sat down and thought about it, to be honest with you. I'm all focused right now on in terms of the actual exact dollar, but the concept, I I think to your point is that I would want to price it at a place that makes sense for our town. So that people, you know, would use the space and 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 put it to good use. Whatever that number is, I don't know what that number is, but whatever it is, yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. We'll close this part of the meeting and open it up to the public. Anybody in the public wants to speak about it? All right, we'll close the public meeting and bring it back to the board. Any other discussion, guys?
I have a couple items. I really appreciate the courtyard feature of this site plan because there is going to be a significant amount of pedestrian traffic to this by students potentially in the future. And I think it's so important. So when we're talking about all the parking concerns, as much as I understand that is very, very important, but without knowing who the tenants are, there is no calculation that we can actually be writing out a safe if passes or fails, right? So when it comes to parking, I can say my feedback here is they did their best guess. We're close, but we obviously need to make all those parking spots meet code requirements. But when it comes to the number of parking spots, I don't think we could ever hold that against them at this point, not knowing what the actual tenants would be or the business uses of that of that. So in my mind, the parking is not a concern. Beyond the the things that have already been considered here and and the comments that are included. And then also with that, on top of that, I think a lot of pedestrian traffic will be there. So kids walking from high school. I see this as a major backdrop for the marching band as they're going to the school and and people are watching from their courtyard. I can see that happening. So I think that's really cool. So with the parking, that that's my mind for the parking things. The other thing regarding lighting, I know in other sites, we didn't take the I appreciate that we're taking more consideration for the entire property, not just this. Because again, there's going to be a lot of pedestrians and I want to make sure we don't miss any opportunity to do sufficient lighting between this development and others as well in there. But otherwise, my suggestion would be based on everything I've heard, and I'm so very excited for this project, would be to approve it with all the considerations of staff and engineering comments. So that's where I stand on that.
Anyone else?
I guess one, and I don't know if this is really a zoning planning commission question, it's the architecture and design and consistency within the subdivision. We don't have an architectural review board, do we? Not that I'm aware of.
You are the architectural review board. The planning commission is this is the appropriate forum to consider the architecture.
Well, I I guess one of the things, I mean, is there some consistency in elements? I mean, I know there's Meridian in first, they're they're using wood. There's certainly, and that's pretty much making a statement as the first people coming in there. And then the other building came in as a more traditional, that has wood on it. I mean, that may be, you know, is there something that that? Because I think contextually, it doesn't really reference anything else going on around there, is my sense. And I, yeah.
And that's, I think, why it was pointed out in the staff report. I think in a in a different subdivision with a different context, there'd be no problem with what's proposed. And that's really at the heart of what we're pointing out as a as a staff is Meridian, when it went in, really tried to set the tone for this subdivision, knowing that was a little bit different than it's immediately surrounding environs. Then we had the the business that came in north of them that has a vet clinic in it now and a couple additional spaces yet to be filled. And they were trying to bridge the gap between the existing townhomes. There's a concrete block and brick veneer or primarily brick townhomes east of that site, east of Wellington Boulevard, and you've got the the quick lube and the car wash. It's it's a difficult site to try to find what is the right architecture. And what we're highlighting here is from a staff perspective, what we see being proposed is different from everything else that's already there. And so it's, that's why we brought it up for discussion. So we're looking for planning commission guidance on do the materials need to change? Does the architecture need to change to be more reflective of a residential style? Do you want to take a more approach that's leaning more towards a commercial storefront type? And not taking away the courtyard setting, because we all agree that's a great attribute. But what do those walls look like? And from a material standpoint, from an architecture, from the the roof line and and architectural embellishments. So that's that's why we brought it up was because we we felt that that conversation needed to happen at this meeting.
To the point. You know, stucco and stone can complement wood pretty good. I think the colors will probably flow if they consider the tones. And it'd probably be a good bridge between the, I think that's the vet clinic on that other building that went up versus the bank, right? I think that's be, I think it'd be a pretty good intermediate, to be honest with you. It's it's just got a, it's got a high, high level roof here, you know, kind of a tower, if you will, and that'll do some, it's got great roof line transition. Which the other ones not really do, they don't, they're more commercial. So I think I think it'll flow myself.
I'm a little more traditionalist. I think I could look past the the roof lines and the three or four or five different materials that architects love to use now. If all the other concerns were kind of a little bit more in order, especially the shade in the courtyard. There's a pretty significant chance that with no shade in that courtyard, there's four months out of the year that nobody's going to use it. We're already kind of seeing that at the the barbecue restaurant that just went in. There's no shade on that patio and on the hottest days, it's empty. So that's a, I think more than anything, that's just, that's my major concern with with the site plan. Courtyard idea spectacular, I love it, but it really, it it does need shade to be fully functional.
Well, it seems like there were a couple tree. I mean, I think there was some discussion about the tree standards not being met, but I mean, depending on what the surface is, is that courtyard is paved or what is the what are we talking about for surfacing material in there?
Believe it, it'd be concrete, concrete at this point. Sorry, I'm gonna I asked Rob to come up just so we can capture that response on the microphone.
Get your name in there too.
Thanks, Rob. Yeah, my name's Rob Malloy. I'm living nine eighty Norway Maple in Loveland. I'm the landscape architect and site planner for the project. So the the courtyard, yeah, it has, you can see the the circle delineations between the different types of or colored, different colored concrete. Planters, raised planters, actually seating areas are the square the square portions of that courtyard. So people can go out and sit around where the trees are going to be planted. Right now, they're pear trees, which are a little bit more upright, but they do go up to twenty feet and about fifteen feet wide. But, you know, the trees can change. I just didn't want to overshade it and become more of a nuisance with, you know, people want to enjoy the sun out there and have that opportunity. So that was the whole idea of that, those seating areas, the the planters, basically where the trees will sit, there's four of them. And then the center has a a water feature, a pondless water feature. So, you know, like a large stone with water flowing down into the rocks and then pumped back up without without ponds. So it kind of gives it a cooling effect too overall. But with the with it being inset to, you know, you're going to have some sun during the 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 heat of the day at noon, you know, and maybe when if the restaurants are in there, they can come out. And then we're going to have outdoor seating area on the tenant number one is the main idea what Fawad wants to open up for a restaurant. I think that's twenty-five hundred square feet is what we were looking at for his restaurant. Then the other option was add another fifteen hundred feet option of another restaurant. So that kind of worked in how the parking counts were put together. We we worked with how they would fit, what type of tenant could go in there to meet what the city standard, town standards are as far as the parking count needs. So but the plaza area is definitely a feature. There's foundation plannings around the on the north side of the the plaza area. So it kind of breaks it all up and obviously when tables and chairs are set out there, it can be umbrellas to sit around. But I didn't want to overwhelm the site with large shade trees. I was doing more of a ornamental tree flowering type tree such.
Any other questions for him while he's up there?
Thank you.
Do we have any, not that I'm aware of any code requirements for outdoor seating for restaurants? Or shade?
No, the your your landscape code or your, excuse me, your land use code does not have any specific definitions or criteria for outdoor spaces. Just there's a general comment in your site plan criteria that identifies that the planning commission has the purview to examine and discuss any outdoor areas for storage or outdoor uses.
Okay, I think really in the best interests of of the tenants, they would provide the appropriate shading or umbrellas or anything. As and as much as this is important for convenience and comfort, when I'm enjoying these businesses, I think this is, I think we honestly, I think we've discussed it to the point where we need to. I don't think there's any requirements other than those considerations that they they should do for good business practices for the site plan. I think most of the plans that we look at don't have an outdoor space. So my concern would be if we're running them through the wringer for a really cool outdoor space when most of our other sites wouldn't even consider doing that, it might be a disservice to what our commission's trying to accomplish perhaps. But in my mind, I think they've accommodated the the shading concerns and they're aware of those considerations and that they'll likely do what's best for their businesses to make sure they're successful. But I don't think that that should be any kind of indication of if we would pass or or not pass the site plan.
There was grease traps mentioned. Is that something that needs to be brought up? Since we sort of know there might be a restaurant or is it not a concern until they actually get a restaurant in there and then they have to put one in?
So Liz, you can address it or I can, either way. Go ahead.
There's a grease trap.
There is a grease trap? Oh, okay. Sorry, I thought it said that was a discussion yet.
Oh, for the grease container for the trash, you know, when you have a restaurant that uses a fryer, they usually need to dispose of the grease from the fryer.
Not enough to meet that code for a restaurant, depending on the size of the restaurant or?
It's usually a, it's usually a separate, a completely separate trash receptacle. So the grease trap is to catch miniscule amounts of grease and other like biodegradable things that we don't really want in the wastewater system. But this would be more of like a receptacle for grease from like a deep fryer.
Is that easy for them to get to?
So it would have to be something that would be included in like the trash enclosure area. The grease, the grease interceptor for the wastewater is going to be on the north side of the parking lot. And it lives underneath the concrete, underneath the concrete, and then there's cleanouts.
You know, it'll probably just be set right by the patio, the, you know, the outdoor dining.
I think we've seen how that example works.
Yes, we have.
And that's
Works awesome.
But and that, I think from from some perspective, it could and and others that are within the planning commission's purview, it might But, and that, I think from, from some perspective, it could and others that are within the planning commission's purview, it might not. And that's the reason why we brought it up. The, and Fawad and, and his team have done a great job of, of addressing the, the comments and concerns that. That planning staff have brought up. Um, they've provided the grease interceptor, which is really more of a wastewater treatment provision. Um, but that's, that's why in, in the staff report, we've, we've brought up these other concerns. We're trying to. Examine all the functional elements of the site and relying on some of our experiences in, in town and elsewhere that we've seen. That maybe should have been done a little bit differently on the front end.
Any more questions in discussion? So I have, um. So we're obviously looking for some form of action tonight. I mean, if we are to. If we were to go ahead and approve this with the parking, it seems like they're not going to make the parking currently. It doesn't look like they're going to make the parking requirements based on the tentative. Layout and use of the spaces and the parking space per so many square feet. I mean, how do we square that if we go ahead and do, do an approval or a conditional approval? Oh, are we just kind of. Rowing the parking requirements out or I, I, I'm, I'm a little puzzled. I'm confused, I guess.
Yeah, I, I'll start it and then Liz, you can jump in if you have other comments. Um, I think the reason. If, if you look at the staff report typically from your planning staff, you get a recommendation, but it's very clear that this is, we recommend approval. Or we recommend approval with one or two conditions. And in tonight's staff report, what we gave you was three options, or you can approve it, you can approve it with conditions. Or you can table it and give guidance for what additional considerations you want to, to have looked at and brought back to the planning commission. The reason we did that and, and believe me, Fawad and his team have been great to work with on this project. I think it, in my mind, it's really the, the cumulative impact of all of the comments that staff has provided where. You know, some of these contextual elements aren't quite a hundred percent clear and the parking could be as a significant factor down the road. Um, the circulation considerations that the site has, um, circulation aisles on three sides of it. Essentially has three fronts to this building. Um, and the landscaping, the shade in the courtyard, grease traps versus grease interceptors. The, all of these cumulative impacts is why staff is sitting here saying, we really need some guidance from the planning commission. If you were to approve, subject to the staff comments as a, as a staff, we would still feel like there's questions that we don't have clear guidance on. And so my recommendation would be if the planning commission wants to, to approve the site plan tonight. We would like to get some specific, uh, guidance on which way the planning commission desires for some of the questions that were raised in the staff report. Um, so that, so we, we would recommend if maybe going through a couple of those items and understanding very clearly what the planning commission expects staff to do. Uh, working with the applicant to move this forward.
Can we go through all those items? Cause if we can do that, if we can get that tonight, that'd be great. If not.
You know, I guess. I'd like to know how you can explain to at least Tim and I that we can approve not enough parking, but then it's okay.
Well, we, that was why we, yeah, I, I have the same question.
I'm just trying to figure out how we do that.
Yeah. I, I heard really clearly, uh, earlier in the conversation that, that the planning commission, I saw heads nodding. Wanted to be very clear that the, the minimum dimensions for parking spaces were met. Which would at a minimum require some changes to, to space those out to meet the, the minimum requirements for, for parking stall width. In doing that, again, we don't have the calculations. We need to see what it results in, but it would certainly result in a, at least a slight reduction from what is currently shown. Um, I, as a staff planner. I do have pause with the number of parking spaces that are currently shown for the amount of square footage of usable building space. Um, when you include two restaurants and 4,000 square feet, that could significantly take up a, a big chunk of that parking area. Um, and there are some other uses that maybe wouldn't have peak traffic for, um, the same times that restaurants would, but we don't know that. And so down the road, that's my concern as a staff planner is if we. Missed the mark and are a little bit low on the parking on this development and the next development to the north and the development to the west. Suddenly you've created a situation where every subdivision or every lot in the subdivision are under parked. And you've really got a traffic congestion problem. And we don't have known, uh, the variables, which are the tenant mix. We don't have known. Um, tenants right now to say definitively, this is how you calculate it. Um, but in absence of knowing, I would encourage the planning commission to consider the long-term impacts and maybe err on the side of caution as opposed to the side of, of under parking. And that would be the staff recommendation for all the future developments as well. But if we don't know. Guessing short would seem to put the town in a continued parking crisis.
That's my concern. We know the one place that I talk about all the time, Sparge Brewery, there's not even close enough parking there when it's busy. And I just don't want to run into that again. I mean, I don't know. Rob, do you have some feedback? Come on up. We're willing to listen to anything.
So when a tenant comes in, uh, they'd have my.
Put the mic.
There you go. That better, it should be useless. So when a tenant comes in, um, don't they have to apply for a building permit? And at that time, can we address the parking, make sure that the, the needs are met at that building permit point? So if they come in, if we do five restaurants in there and, or want to, and they come in for a building permit to, for the, the interior of the building. Does that meet the, uh, parking requirements by the town? And at that point you can say, well, you can't do that. You can't put a restaurant in there. It doesn't meet the parking. Would that alleviate some of the standards? Cause what we did here basically. Fit the building on the lot, but is, put all the parking spaces that could fit on a lot. And, uh, yeah, there is the, the back ones didn't realize that we don't have the wide enough space. I think we're going to lose about five spaces with, if we end up going to nine foot on the backside. I want, I want to address that real quick too, if I could, but to the point is. We had a number of parking spaces. So what tenants can we fit into this building based on the parking spaces? It wasn't, uh, the opposite. We didn't say, okay, these are the tenants that we want. Now we're going to design a parking lot to meet those needs. So I think of when you go to building permit. The, the parking count needs to be accounted for to make sure that that use fits for that tenant's space. So you can do a, a changeover in the amount. I mean, we're, we're particular specific. On the site plan with the site plan table on the uses, but that is just based on how much park can we have? So, um, and then real quick on the address on the back, because there is already a handicap ramp in the northwest corner. Um, that's existing and matches up with the handicap ramp across the street. We lost, we, we're not going to tear that out. We're going to maintain that. So we lost another spot. So those spaces on the back. Uh, northwest end of the building are all nine foot and we were looking at that as those are more employee parking. The backend should be more employee parking, um, for accessibility to the uses basically. So that's kind of what we were asking for, but the, the nine foot, if I go to 10 feet, then we lose one space there. The angled parking, if I go eight and a half to 10 feet, we lose three spaces, a little over three spaces, but you might as well count it as four and widen out the landscape island. Um, to make up that, that difference. So just a few things there, a few ideas, but, uh, that's a suggestion.
Thank you. Cody, I have a question or Liz. If they were to brought this plan to us as just a business park, with just offices in it, it has plenty of parking, right?
I didn't do that math. Is that?
I haven't done that math either, but yeah.
Well, I mean, if it's not plenty, then we definitely don't have enough for a restaurant, but I would assume it's, should be plenty if you were just doing.
Office park.
What I'm saying.
An office park, it's probably plenty parking, but.
Basing this upon having a restaurant and which is kind of what he's saying. The permit, I thought we usually nailed some of that parking stuff when the businesses came in for their apartment, for their. Business.
Right. Yeah. The, well, I, I think I heard two things and, and, um, what Rob from the, from the audience here, or not audience. He's sitting in the, in the seats behind the microphone. So I'm just going to repeat it. Um, what his comment was, is that the employees of the businesses are counted in that overall parking requirement, which is true. Um, and then I heard, um, what Bert was saying was if, if this was a, an overall office development and didn't include the restaurants. We would have a clear parking calculation, but because we have restaurants, we're factoring that in. Um, that is true as well. I think from, from staff's perspective, the concern we're going to run into here is, is exactly the scenario that, that Rob described a moment ago. When we've got seven out of the nine tenants. Uh, identified and operating, and then the eighth and ninth one comes in and says, I want to put in X business. Staff or this planning commissioner are going to say no to that business because you don't have adequate parking when this is the time to address the parking concerns. That's the scenario. I don't think that the town wants to find itself in for telling a business, no, you can't locate here because you don't have adequate parking. I think that's a, a, it's certainly operationally, it can be done. Um, it wouldn't be very popular for, for anyone involved or for, for Wad. To get that response that you can't bring this tenant into your, to your development because you don't have adequate parking.
Right. Well, this is kind of a bigger question, but it still comes back to parking. I mean, in the. I mean, obviously Meridian wants to develop this. I mean, the parcel's not that huge and I'm. Could they have like a municipal parking, like a group parking lot, which I don't think they're going to really want to put the dollar for. Um, but I'm just wondering sort of looking at what's going on if, in a bigger picture. Is that something we ought to be thinking about? I mean.
Well, I think the, from a bigger picture perspective, potentially the challenge you run into is if, if each of the lots within the subdivision doesn't have. Enough off-street parking, where are people going to go? And there was an example mentioned earlier tonight, which I won't repeat the business name, but you see what happens. And those, those vehicles that don't have a space to park on the property, park in the roadway. And there, although the, the road is wider and maybe can accommodate that. This circulation aisle within the subdivision that the Ms. Connect brought up earlier does not allow. On-street parking because of the access requirements for two-way traffic and emergency vehicles. A parked vehicle would immediately obstruct that and be in violation in a sense. Same would be true for any delivery vehicle, um, and a trash truck, even though a trash truck is there for a very short amount of time. While they're there, they've blocked circulation. And th- those are the reasons from a planning perspective, we do think it's impactful to the overall subdivision because if every one of these lots is going to have the same conversation.
I'm saying I'm for this. I'm just, if we were to table this till next month, what could be accomplished in that timeframe? To solve these issues.
Question.
Yeah. Come on up.
I just wanted to address, um, the comment about, um, you know, we have two restaurants. That's the square footage that we allocated. And now we have a third restaurant coming in that wants to use a space that really we can only allow for retail or office just because of the parking spaces is available. Uh, and I know it's not, you, you know, you comment Cody that this is not something that, you know, the planning department would want to tell someone you can't be there. But my thought, it's really, it, it's really the responsibility of. The business owner really is going to come. If someone comes in and are not going to meet the parking requirement for the business that we've put into place. Then it is my responsibility to find a tenant that's going to fit within these requirements because those are the requirements that we agreed on. And, and I need to be selective. And from the very beginning, we're saying, as I mean, my thought, and if you disagree, let me know. We're not saying we just need restaurants in that space. We're saying we need restaurants. It'd be good to have some additional options, but we also need space for retail and office. So at one point, this scenario might actually exactly happen. Where I have two restaurants, I have three retail, I have four offices, I have one space that's available. And someone's going to come and say, you know, Fawad, I'd love to lease that place from you and I need to have a restaurant there. And I need to be able to look at them in the eye and tell them I can't. Because we've had the requirements for parking does not allow me to lease it to you and I need to go and find a retail or an office. Application that can use, use that space. So I feel there is some ownership on me as the owner, uh, because I feel like the alternative would be. To put constraint on the project right now from the very beginning, where we make it very difficult for it to happen. Um, and, and limit ourself in terms of what we can do in that space. When we can, we know there is a need and we can meet the square footage that. Uh, that I've suggested just based on the need in our community, if, if, if we're patient in terms, in terms of finding the right tenants for the space. And during the time when the only person that who can actually lease a place from me for that one remaining space is a restaurant. I am the one who is actually, yes, I mean, the town is losing on the fact that we're not bringing another vendor. Uh, to the town, but I am also losing as the owner of the place who invested into the place. And I have vested interest in finding someone who come and fits within the parameters we agreed on. Just want to share that thought with you to take into consideration. The, the other thought I have about that area is that some of the peak hours for parking are going to happen. In, in, I think in the evenings, um, you know, after four o'clock or five o'clock. And, and the, you know, I haven't discussed this with, with the credit union. They probably would rebel against me, but, uh. It's something to discuss with them because they close at five o'clock. And, and there is a lot of parking spaces there that are not used. So it's something to consider in the grand scheme of the whole project and the subdivision. Um, the, when are the peak hours and is there enough parking overall to accommodate that? Thanks.
Thanks, Juan. Based on 76 parking spaces. 4,000 square foot restaurant would be 40 parking spaces, right? So at least 36 left over. How many is, how many is required for those other office spaces if that's just what they are? In the square footage. For our, for what we're saying. I just don't want to do the math. Fawad knows it.
So, so what we've proposed in terms of the square footage, uh, it would require 83 parking spaces. And what we currently have without the modifications that Rob mentioned are 82. So they are short one space. What?
But when you make those spaces wider, you're going to lose five. So you'd be down 76, right? Okay. You said five earlier, but okay, four.
We would be short five total. You're right. Yeah. So we would lose four and we're now short one. So we would be a short total of five.
Based on the existing calculations, 4,000 for a restaurant is 40 spaces. 5,100 for retail is 26 spaces. 5,065 square feet of office would be 17 spaces. If the remaining after the restaurant were all office, a, a quick assumption would be that the remaining spaces would be 34.
Okay. Based on that, you're probably okay.
Are you using the one per 300?
In section five of the comments, is that where, I don't know where the 300.
Right. So they, there's a, so, so some use, some business uses require one space per 300.
Yeah.
Some require one space per 200 and restaurants require one space per 100 square feet.
Okay. Yeah. So if the rest was, was calculated, the 300 square feet, we'd be right around the 34 spaces.
Which doesn't account and then, and you're correct, uh, cause I did that same math. I think the concern that I'm hearing is that. If those uses require one per 200, then there wouldn't be enough to satisfy the, the code requirement and meet the business need.
I was just doing the math.
Yeah. One for 200.
Let me open up the code and I, I will get back to you as soon as I pull up our code and have those provisions.
I want to bring up, I want to bring up a point that Bert had made a few months back. And he said, I'm going to hold you to it when we get another business in town. If the town hall. Is able to utilize the T-bar parking lot to suffice their parking. Might be the same situation. So Fawad, open up a counter at Meridian, have a conversation with them. And, you know, it could be one of our, you know, ores, you know, having, you know, hey, we'll approve this with, you know, some of our concerns and. What would Meridian say? what would Meridian say? You know, that's.
I almost see some people are going to park there anyway.
Right.
At night.
That's exactly where I was going to go. I would love that conversation to happen before we make any kind of movement on this because that could solve all the problems.
I mean, the T-bar said it was okay for the town.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, I think there was more to that agreement than just saying yes.
Oh, maybe. Well, maybe Quad could offer snow removal for the bank.
Cody?
So, thank you. I, so I, I, I looked the, looked up our, our code and I have that answer. Um, and real quickly, I wanted to comment on, on Commissioner Connect's comment as well. I think the planning commission might remember, we have asked other tenants um, at the time of subdivision and plat approval to enter into shared parking and cross slot access agreements to accommodate a, a mixed use or a shared parking arrangement to satisfy the parking needs of the overall development. Um, if that was a conversation that Meridian and Fawad were open to doing, we would, I think that is a, a reasonable alternative um to ensure adequate parking. And maybe it's the whole subdivision, maybe it's just between two lots to, to make sure that their uh, use mix is satisfied. Um, but I think that is a viable option uh to consider. And then to the, to the earlier question, uh, under your existing land use code, uh, restaurants require one space for every one hundred square feet. Retail requires one space for every two hundred square feet. And office business requires one parking space for every three hundred square feet. So, and this is just according to your code uh that exists today. If the, the question was um earlier, if the four thousand square feet of restaurant proposed was restaurant and the rest was office business, it would meet the parking requirements. If the remainder less the restaurant was retail, it would not. It would be twenty plus twenty-one, twenty-two parking spaces short of your code requirements. So, and that's, that's really all that staff is saying, not operationally, what, what that site has or, or will have based on a unknown tenant mix. We're pointing out your code requirements and if we don't know it, the typical assumption would be that you don't approve it unless you're going for the more um, the more conservative of, of the two. But that's just what the code says. Um, we're happy to work with, with the applicant. We can work with them on a shared parking or, or cross lot, shared parking arrangement with the adjacent lots, if that's a desire. Obviously, we need to have, make sure that's acceptable for the, for the applicant as well. But there are a couple of options. I think all we're really pointing out is there's a concern that the code wouldn't be met without some more known quantities at this time.
If, if I was going in there and I have a full-size pickup truck, so I'm going out to dinner, then uh, like I do when I go to Ridley's, I take up two spark, parking spaces. Because when I open my doors, I'm going to smash somebody on either side. And so to protect them from getting killed by my truck, I take up two spaces and park right down the middle of the line. Now, when I go to Ridley's, I park as far out in the parking lot as I can so that I don't inconvenience any more people than I have to. If I go to a restaurant in this new complex, I'm probably going to park over in Meridian or across the street at the uh Lube Stop or I may be over at the new vet center and park in that area, especially in the evenings when they're all closed, so that my truck doesn't get beat up. And so, you know, these parking spaces are too small to me. But I've got a full-size pickup truck. And I know from my customers at the O'Reilly's Auto Parts store that a lot of people come in with their full-size pickup trucks with dooleys on the back and those aren't big and those spaces aren't big enough for their trucks. Because this area is not just Wellington and a suburb of Fort Collins. It's industrial and agricultural and ranching and those folks drive those big vehicles. And so, where are they going to park? Well, a nine-foot space isn't big enough, ten-foot space isn't big enough, twenty-foot long space may not be big enough because the trucks are twenty-two feet long. And I can't tell you how many times people pull into the O'Reilly's parking lot and they're pulling a fifty-foot trailer behind them too. So these folks are going to go looking for other things, other places to park their equipment. Hey dear, let's go out to dinner. Well, we gonna, what do we do with the horses and the trailer in the back? Well, we'll take them with us too. I, I like the idea, but the parking's the only thing that's bugging me about it right now. And they can't, he can't get enough spaces, you can't get enough spaces for what you're trying to do and follow through with what I'm talking about. So your customers are going to have to go somewhere else like Meridian or someplace to find a place to park.
So I go back to a question earlier, what can we, if we table this for a month, what can we accomplish?
Well, earlier I heard the, a comment that um perhaps if all of the staff comments in the staff report were addressed, that approval would be acceptable. And my response was, there's still some things in there that if you approved it exactly to our comments, some of our comments were, there's a discrepancy here as opposed to this is the fix. So if, from an administrative standpoint, if that was the action tonight, I think myself and, and the applicant would be left with, so how do we resolve this? It's not clear exactly what the resolution on some of these bigger topics are. Um, particularly on the, the, I know the parking question is getting all the attention right now, and I think it's because there's not a clear answer. If there was, I think it'd be easy to solve. Um, so a, a month's time would allow um staff and the applicant to get together on some of these topics that didn't, or at least haven't been resolved yet and figure out a proposal to bring back the planning commission um with a clear, this is what we think will address these concerns. Short of that, I think the planning commission would, may need to go through the staff report and give clear guidance on, on some of those items that are open-ended at this moment.
Sure, come on up.
While he's coming up here though, I think that the, making the parking, each parking spot, the correct size is essential. I don't think that there's any
Right.
any possibility of getting around that.
That's what we planned on doing.
Perfect.
You're going to fix parking.
Perfect.
Um, I think a better solution rather than wait a month, we just have a fixed use uh to match what we have for parking, period. So um whatever that calculation is, I don't know if we take out certain square foot of retail and more office space to alleviate those five spaces that we're, we're, we're lacking and just fix it and uh make it a fixed use rather than a question of what the uses are going to be. So the square footage for retail will be fixed, the square footage allowed for, for um restaurant will be fixed. The square footage for office will be fixed and cannot be adjusted over time of who's going to go in there and, and such. It's, it's only allowed for what the site plan table says a slot for.
I see Cody multiplying and dividing times pi.
Should be it.
I was sorry, the, the exercise I was looking at was um just calculating what the, the parking would be if, if the remainder of the space less the four thousand for restaurant was all retail. Um, its parking needs would, per code would be fifty parking spaces, which we talked about what forty is required for the restaurant use, so that'd be over what is currently shown as available. I did the, the math again, if the building was two thousand square feet smaller and the parking need was reduced to forty, which is closer to um, and that's for a hundred percent retail at the one per two hundred. So, no, if not knowing what those future tenants might be, if they were all retail, where the town staff and planning commission and, and the owner wouldn't want to tell a business, no, you can't locate here because you don't have enough parking, reducing the amount of square footage reduces the parking need uh for the site. And so that would be an option to meet the parking needs is reduce the amount of square footage so that the parking need is not as onerous and you have more square footage to provide parking spaces. So that would be a potential solution that could be worked out over, you know, some additional time and subject to, I know the owner uh commented that the square footage was pretty integral to their, to their site plan. I'm just proposing, just strictly mathematically, there is a solution um that could address multiple comments.
Doesn't just shuffling the square footage allotment on this do the same thing?
Yeah.
To just allow more for offices, the fewest. So if you just bump that up to, I mean, go, go tenant by tenant and increase it by, take one tenant from retail and switch it to office, does that solve the problem? If not, does two solve the problem? And is there a balance point in here that will make it happen without having to address the overall shell building square footage?
Yeah, the most important use is the twenty-five hundred square foot that he plans on operating as a restaurant. And from there, we, we break it down to what fits for the parking.
Yeah, just shuffle those numbers until they work.
So uh, is there, they did identify as a possibility to have some, do you say cross easement with Meridian that some parking could be used? And would that in, in fact solve it? Because it might be different hours between, I mean, is, is that a reasonable approach?
I think we can come back with an amended plan if the restaurant wants, additional restaurant space wants to go in there. We come back with an amended plan at that time and have a uh, a parking agreement with Meridian. Is that acceptable?
I think so. Identify it as the need arises instead of going through the motions now if we can solve it just by.
Yeah, I would think so.
So right now we're basing, basing on twenty-five hundred square foot restaurant, which would mean twenty-five parking spaces, right?
Correct, and I, I, if under that proposal, are you eliminating the other restaurant use?
That's what the.
What I propose is what, exactly what Eric was, I, I was thinking along the same lines. I'd like to keep the four thousand square foot for restaurant, I think. I like, I like the option of having more than uh one restaurant in that area. But um, w- one thing we can do, which Eric proposes, is to switch the retail with the office, so we will have less square footage allocated for retail and more of it allocated for office. But we still, we, I think when we do the math, we'll find out that we still have a good mix of retail and office that would still meet the, I think the new number, we have eighty-two minus five, so we would have seventy-seven parking spots that would meet the seventy-seven parking spots requirement.
I did some math real quick, so if it's four thousand square foot of restaurant, you could have nine thousand square foot of office and one thousand square foot of retail and that would be seventy-five square, seventy-five parking spaces. Or if you had only one restaurant, for example, twenty-five hundred square feet, and then you had seven thousand square feet of retail, forty-five hundred of office, that would also equal seventy-five parking spots. So if there's two restaurants, it would be primarily just office and two restaurants. If there was one restaurant, it could be more of a mix, but um, I mean, so, and honestly, as I've mentioned before, they did the calculation to make those spreads based off the parking spots they thought they had prior to us making them bigger. So that same exercise could still happen with the reduced number of parking spots, so um, I, I, I think I understand that we'd want them to come back with that spread as expected of, you know, where they would allocate those, those square footages. I think that's good. And then with the parking plan to see if they could share with Meridian. I think those would be great things to come back with and then to prove the parking needs.
One of my concerns about that though is that you, I hate for you to, us and the town too, for you to end up with this great building and half, three quarters, a third, whatever it is, is vacant because we really need some retail, but all we have is office space. So I would hate that to hinder, you know, all of us and what we need to, um. Maybe the Meridian thing might work.
Yeah, you know, I'm leaning towards tabling this now. It seems like there's a significant amount of calculating going on in this side and the applicants, i- it seems like there's a bunch of horse trading going on in real time. And I don't necessarily know we're going to get the best decision. It feels kind of premature to me. And uh, because again, it's, yeah, it's, it's, it just feels like there's too many things up in the air right now.
If Juan, I want you to get the best you think you can get for this. I want you to get the best you can for it, you know, we need retail, town needs retail, we need, you know, we tax dollars. Um, I think we need to table it and let you do your homework with her. Meridian, all, all scenarios and get the best outcome you can get. Two restaurants would be great. A bunch of retail would be great. So I, I mean, I, I think for the, for the dollars, it's really what you want anyway, and you just need a little time to get that figured out.
I want you to fill it up.
Yeah, no, and, and I want to do that too, and I'm, I'm, I mean, obviously, if this is what you decide, this is what we will do, is table it. But uh, I, I want you to consider that if we agree that what we need to do is come up with an allocation that meets the parking spots that we can fit in that area, then would you consider approve it with the understanding that we're going to come up with that allocation? I, I just, I don't feel like we need to wait a month just to come up with that allocation. I can go home, discuss it with the family and, and really tomorrow, I can send an allocation to Cody and tell him, well, here is the allocation that meet the parking requirements or the parking spots that are available. And I definitely want to have some retail space there. So if we, if, if, if my assignment is, we're going to have seventy-seven instead of eighty-two parking spots and I need to find the best mix for my business, I, I can do that. I don't need a month for that.
Okay, fair enough. Fair enough.
I want to add one more thing on here that I just read. And it's a little bit of a change, but it, I don't know if it's going to impact one or two parking spots is the signage. Did we go through that um in looking at a monument sign and having sign? Um, because it says that staff's encouraging a location of that. But it hasn't really indicated where, what that looks like either.
Yeah, that's a good point. Uh, there is a, there is a location at the corner uh at the um, yeah, right there, where a monument sign can be placed. We, we haven't placed one right now, but that would be a good place for it. Because as people come in, you know, to park, they would have a good view of the businesses that are available uh in that area. So I don't expect, if we decide to put a monument sign, I don't expect that would affect the uh parking spots that are available.
When do we need to kind of make that decision on a monument sign?
Do you have some feedback on that, Liz?
Just really quick for some context, so um I zoomed into the spot, that's where the bicycle parking is as well. Um, when we went through the first iteration of the site plan with the applicant and their agents, we had suggested to identify all the signage for the tenants as well as the monument sign and the square footage, like we've been doing and bringing to planning commission so that we don't have to bring back each individual sign for tenants as they materialize into businesses. Um, and the applicants decided that they didn't want to do that at this time, but that would be the location is, is that spot where we had previously seen it, but then they um decided to take it out of this version. Um, but it would be there and it could potentially impact the bicycle parking, so that would be something just to make sure that we keep it out of the easements and still have the bicycle parking accommodated. Um, but it would be in that corner right there.
And I'd add that there'd be some consideration we need to be given to the site triangles with turning vehicles around pedestrian movements.
Cody, do you have a concise list of everything you would want an answer? If, if we were to table it, not saying that that's what will happen, but do you have a concise list of everything you would want clarified by November, if that's the decision? Or if you have that ready tonight, is it something that we can rattle off in the motion to approve it pending comments, staff comments?
Yeah, great question, and I, I think we could get pretty close. Um, and Liz jumped up here, so she probably has been keeping some notes and I've got some as well. I think the, the, the bigger context and, and my biggest concern is around the, the parking and circulation and the overall impacts. And one of the questions of clarification that I would, would seek tonight is the loading unloading zone. If that was needed or, or required, which right now staff nor the applicant has clear direction on what is, would be needed or required for that, that would significantly impact all other elements. that would significantly impact all other elements of the site. Same would be true for, and we haven't talked about it yet, but the post office boxes. Typically, the post office says this is where we want you to put your, your cluster box for your tenant, uh, mail. And they want to have a space where they can park their vehicle, which they do during business hours to deliver mail and retrieve mail, which could impact the parking count and circulation. I, I really feel that there are some, some high level elements that need to be vetted, um, and considered holistically. But if the planning commission desires to approve this tonight, we can go through this list, um, and identify what the guidance is from the commission to each of those points.
Can I say something briefly? The, um, in the sixteen years on a planning commission, it's been probably four years since we had a project come in like this that was not complete when it showed up here to the planning commission. This one, there's a number of issues that were listed in there that should have been addressed before this meeting and weren't. Uh, you named off two or three of them right there. I just don't feel like I can possibly vote on this tonight. If I do, I'm gonna vote no. I just think there's more things that need to be answered.
And I, I hear you and, and I, I will say, a- again, that, that Fawad and, and Rob and, and others from the design team have been very good about working with staff to address some of our concerns. And I, I think what, aside from some of the, the minor things in here that we pointed out, uh, that could be easily corrected, what you're seeing with the, the questions that are coming up tonight are the items that, um, were discussed between staff and the applicant where we couldn't quite get that, that headway to say this is for sure gonna work. Um, and so we, we brought it to the planning commission for consideration. Um, and we're, we're kind of hearing this, what staff initially suspected was that some of these things need to be further clarified to show that it meets the requirements or at least meets the intent of the, the land use code criteria uh, in order to bring it back. Um, but staff is, is fully supportive of finding a way to make this work. Um, I can't speak well enough about the applicant and his team and, and wanting to make this successful. And staff feels the same way. We're confident that we'll, we will get there.
Did you have something you wanted?
No.
Okay.
No list of, to make a concise list, there's, and I, I just did it really quick. There's one. There's eleven questions.
Seems like a lot.
It's kind of a lot to go line by line and make decisions.
I, I appreciate the applicant's comments about, you know, it, it won't take a month to resolve the parking issues. But I think, I think it's more than just the parking issues. It sounds like the scale of the things that need to be addressed is larger than just flipping some math around tonight.
Do you need any other direction from this group for those eleven questions?
I think Cody's comment about the loading and unloading is a big one. Um, I think we've heard pretty loud and clear that the parking sizes need to meet the minimums. Um, and that, and that's gonna reduce the parking at which point a fixed mix of uses is gonna probably be part of that as well as, um, maybe working with Meridian Credit Union to get an agreement for, for parking on off hours. It sounds like something that's of interest to the planning commissioners as well. Um, and then I think the other things that I kind of just jotted down, um, around the courtyard and any of the landscaping, um, that people may or may not want to address. It sounded like maybe we want to have that be operational from a business standpoint to decide how they want to deal with, um, the shape. And then um, the architecture was still a question, um, that's listed here. Um, and, and if there's more to, to consider, or if we want to ask for elements to be explored and changed. Um, the signage as well as the placement for the monument sign is something that, um, isn't, I mean, we have a hypothetical location that's not demonstrated on the plan set tonight. Um, but we could consider that as, you know, if that seems like a suitable location from the planning commissioner's perspective, um, to see that or to pull it up and look at what it was before, which I don't think is very realistic. It's not on the one that we're looking at tonight, so. Um, and then there were a couple of hanging things, like providing an irrigation plan, which can come later. The site trees and the, the site triangle trees. Um, and how to address that and still meet trees, um, cause that would reduce two more trees. So I think there's some big questions potentially.
Yep, Rob.
Uh, so, yeah, we have, we have a number of questions that we have to, um, address basically. And that's why I kind of thought we were gonna do tonight. We just got these comments on Thursday, basically. So we haven't had, been in conversation with the, the planning department. Um, the primary one about the deliveries, it's, um, we, uh, contacted the, uh, traffic engineer that was hired for the project. Actually, Hugh was hired, he works with the, the town himself, Sean Keller, um, on this whole site and other sites throughout the town. Um, he addressed that, that the, uh, delivery should not be an issue. There should be no issue. Um, we, we sent a letter into planning, his letter into planning that addressed that, uh, um, the whole, the way this is set up with private drives throughout, it's almost like a, um, a retail center, basically. We have parking that is, uh, perpendicular to, to the drives, like, uh, King Super's parking lot, basically. So the way it would work out is, yeah, delivery hours are specific and they're usually specific for, uh, restaurants and retail. And the amount of time they come in and, uh, whether they're gonna block parking spots for how long they're gonna be in. I, I mean, we don't really find those issues across town. We don't, I, I don't, um, I've, have never foreseen that as a, as an issue, especially since we, these are, uh, private drives, basically, and not local streets where it would be more of a concern. Um, and the, uh, the trash, um, is a specific time. Uh, it's, uh, that's something we also, um, worked out as a location and such. Well, yes, we need to add a man door on the back so they don't have to go around the, the street to, uh, to dump. I think that's the only issue there. The doors don't open into the street at all. Uh, track, it, it, there's enough room for a trash truck to come in, cause it's setback far enough. Uh, it has to be setback far enough because there's an easement there that trash trucks can come in and, and go right back out without, um, hindrance. These aren't streets that are gonna be highly root, you know, used, um, even when the development is fully built out. And, um, the amount of traffic from the traffic study shows that these aren't high level streets, they're not local streets. They're, they're just like this whole area is, uh, um, if you can picture it as a, a retail center. Um, some of the tree counts, uh, yes, there is some discretion on how the tree counts match on the, the, the number of trees that we need based on the different levels. Um, the, uh, parking islands, the overall site, the open space and such. So we, we'll work those out basically, but there are some conflicts where I can't put trees in, in some of the islands. Because you, the engineers love to run utilities through my islands and I can't put trees in there, basically. And then we have street light, um, that are existing out there too, that are in, within the islands. And we don't want to inhibit that. Um, as far as the trees within the sight line, uh, there probably should be a statement on the plan that the trees need to be limbed up at least seven feet above the base. And then they are not in conflict with the, the site, sight line. That's pretty typical of, of any sight line that the trees need to be, um, make sure that they're limbed up at least seven feet above the surface of the ground. And I can add that statement into the, um, as far as landscape plan. Um, as far as the lighting goes, we can look at other, uh, directions, uh, you know, the sidewalks along the side. Uh, we don't want to overlight, we don't want to underlight. Maybe we can look at, uh, adding some ballers or something like that. But that's something we can work out, um, you know, uh, over the month, over the period of time. Um, I guess the biggest concerns are that we clarify exactly, um, what, uh, um, the particulars are concerned with the plan, plan commission. So we can work out with, uh, and yeah, they, the planning department's been great with us. Um, and we wanted to continue that, but we want to make sure we have defining answers before we, um, come back to you, basically. And we'll, we'll definitely work out the parking in the best interest of how the, this, the town wants it, wants it to be. Um, we'll correct the, the width of the parking lot, um, get a correct number of parking spaces, talk to Meridian, the whole works. Figure out what's gonna be allowed use and stick with those allowed uses for those square footages.
Thank you, Rob.
Okay, thank you.
Let's just get more discussion going here.
Well, well.
I'm still a little lost.
You know.
This would be the most incomplete thing we've ever approved in the last five years. At the point it is right now, I want to get this done for these guys. I'm a businessman too. I know what it's like. But, uh, I'm a loss. Did, did they really just get this information on Thursday?
The, the final staff report information was, was sent on Thursday or Friday. Uh, we've had conversations and brought some of these similar concerns up and have been in ongoing conversations about some of these high level topics. Some of the, the, the finer details may have been new because we were focused on the higher level. But I think the minor details are pretty easy to resolve.
Don't we usually try and get that stuff earlier? Like one day before we get our notice, that's not enough. That's why we ran into this problem.
Yeah, how many, how many concept changes did we make in going through different iterations on the site? I know Rob's redrawn at least the landscape component a couple of times. And it's, it's definitely been ongoing conversations to try to zero in on, on where we want to be.
So I can't speak for what the applicants have done, but we've, staff has seen a similar site plan in June or July. Um, and we provided a, a set of high level conversation notes to the applicant from engineering, building and planning. Um, and then this was the next site plan that we received. Um, so it has been an iterative conversation and we've gone back and forth on some of these points. Since June or July, I can't remember when the concept meeting was.
Could he be willing to, can we have a special meeting in two weeks? Or does that require a notice to everybody to meet again, notice to the public?
Um, a special meeting is an, an option. Um, the, the planning commission chair can call a special meeting. We have to provide minimum notice requirements, but it, it is accomplishable.
Is there a conflict for the use of this space if that's the way we'd like to go forward?
I don't believe there are any other groups that meet Monday nights in the boardroom, but we could certainly verify that before. And I could, if that's a desire of the planning commission, I can coordinate with the chairman to find a, a suitable time and then we can send that notice out.
It's, it's obviously not the best scenario, but it's better than a month. I don't really want to come back here again in two weeks and discuss this again, but we'd have to have everything nailed down better.
I, I, I'm just gonna speak for myself here. Part of the reason I'm on the planning commission is because we've heard that it's very difficult for businesses to come in and to build businesses. And sometimes it's because of the holdups, things like that. So, you know, I agree, I really want this to happen for you guys and I don't want to hold you up too much. But, and I would come back in two weeks because I want us to, you know, as a town, as a planning commission, to start figuring out how we can make these things a little faster. But I, I agree too, that there are some, some questions.
I would like to see you in a little better spot on this. I mean, we, we take a lot of direction from your overall, you know, feelings and settlement, I guess, and how, how you perceive these things that come across. And to hear that there are still a lot of things that town staff has questions on, I think that kind of placed our decision too. I, I wouldn't be comfortable passing it as is right now, knowing that town staff has as many questions as they do.
Other question was based on that is, would you feel comfortable in two weeks? Or is that just putting too much pressure to get too much done in a short period of time?
You, you know, I would comment that our, our staff will make every effort to make that happen. I think that conversation goes back to the applicant and his team as well to understand if they can address the comments, have the conversations and turn drawings back around in time for a review and a packet. It is a little tight considering revisions, drawings, updating and resubmitting for review.
I was gonna say, as the staff contact on this, we can, I can turn it around in a day. I just have to block out a day. Especially since we know what we're looking for, it makes it a lot easier. You don't have to do the full review again. So it's totally possible from a staff perspective.
Special meeting, would it just be address the questions and concerns, not review the whole thing over again, right?
I don't know.
I, I think it, similar to the way staff approached this with, with the conceptual review meetings with the applicant, we were, uh, very happy to continue to just kind of continue the conversation from where we left off. So I think, but the, the bigger context, you still have to see the whole site plan. I think you would just see a, a modified staff report that identifies these items were resolved. If there's any remaining items left, then that would be what would highlight it in that, in that staff report. So it'd be a much simplified version of what we've gone, gone through tonight.
Uh, if we were to table this, I think I would feel best as if we had updated drawings, of course, that showed parking, um, signage and trees that met the, the feedback that we provided as well as, um, I think, cause I think we need those drawings, right? So I guess it's really up to them to determine how quickly they can turn that around. But, um, with that said, I, uh, I, I don't know if that can be done in two weeks. I guess that's up to you guys, but. But I would like to see those as finally, it's not necessarily, uh, we decided on this or this is the arrangement we made, but it would be in that final view.
Yeah, redoing the, uh, drawings and updating them, I think would take more than two weeks. Uh, so, um, if, if that's what, what you want to see, I think, I think it's, it's wise for us to go with a month.
So you'd have to have signage in there too then with this, right?
That would be my, that would be my suggestion, as if we're, if that's one of the outstanding items, I think we should acknowledge that.
Normally there's a sign shown in the drawing, right?
There, there would be, and, and the reason that continues to show up in the staff report is your current code says that a freestanding sign is approved by the com- planning commission at the time of site plan review. So if it's not shown, there's no sign unless they bring it back at a later date and it has to go through the planning commission. So we're, what we're trying to accomplish is, I mean, at least identify a location and a general theme for materials. It doesn't have to be exactly like that, but if there's a multi-tenant sign desired in the future, identifying where and that it's gonna be consistent with the building architecture, um, satisfies the planning commission consideration. Staff can do the rest of it administratively. If it has to move a little bit or the dimensions change a little bit, as long as it's within code and they can put whatever content on that sign that they need to for their businesses. Having the location and the materials or the general materials approved by the planning commission is really the key.
Also, I'm fine with architecture. If we want to nail that question down right now, I don't see any need to change architecture, architecture. So that wouldn't be any requirement. In my mind, if we were to table this and give them tasks of what to come with, whenever we meet again, I would say the architecture is fine as is. So I, I just don't want them to work on that, different drawings or whatever, without any direction of yes, no, that we're good with what they have.
Uh, do you gentlemen feel like you can come up with everything that needs to be done in two weeks? I hate to come back in two weeks and.
One, one thing. Sorry.
You said you needed a month.
To update the drawings. I, I think to answer the questions we can do in two weeks to update the drawings, I think we need more than two. We need the month.
Okay.
Uh, with that said, if I may, I, I think I have clarity on some items. But for example, just to bring one item, the, the loading and unloading, as, as Rob mentioned, we have consulted with the traffic engineer. We got feedback from them that this is not required. So I need your help in terms of direction, what you want me to do, because I'm gonna go ahead and do it. What, what else beyond that we, we need to do to address that item? So we have a clear direction here. It, I mean, just to, just to tell you, it is, it is, it, 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 the feedback from the traffic engineer was welcome because it adds a lot of, um, a- additional pressure on the project to have that loading and loading zone if it's not required. And when we consulted with the traffic engineer, they said that for this project, he did the traffic engineer for the whole subdivision, not only for our site, for that project and also from his experience on other, uh, projects similar to this one, that loading and loading, a dedicated loading. a loading and loading, a dedicated loading and unloading zone would not be required. So I, I don't know what, you know, in this month, what else would I be doing to address that issue?
I don't know that it's an issue if you're doing it off hours. If you're, if you're unloading off hours, is that an issue?
I don't know how we could enforce that on a private entity to say that, I mean, do we sign them, send a violation notice if there, if there's a delivery vehicle during business hours? And that, that's kind of the, the question, the fundamental question.
Isn't that a detriment to him and his businesses? That's his problem?
If, if it's all on private property.
Which it is.
It, well, it, is it, it's on private property, but there's a shared access easement. I mean, that's if you, I don't know if Liz, can you zoom out a little bit to the north side of the site? One of the big concerns that we talked about initially was the location of the trash enclosure. There's a whole other development site on the other side of that roadway. And so if, if a trash truck, delivery vehicle, what have you, is parked there for any length of ti, time, excuse me, it's obstructing access and traffic flow for other lots within the subdivision. It's still on private property. It's not impacting a public roadway, but it does impact the adjacent lot owners and their use of their site. And so that's why we bring these questions up is we're, we're pointing out the potential conflicts.
Right. And then trash truck's gonna be there for 10 minutes, 15 minutes, once a week?
Twice a week, maybe.
Twice a week? How big of an impact is it? That's what I'm getting at.
They did a tremendous job. This is one of the most thorough reports I've ever gone through seriously. Um, but as far as delivery goes, um, I work at home. And I see FedEx trucks, Amazon trucks, all kinds of trucks going up and down my private, public street constantly. They, they pull in, they pull over, they get out, they throw, run up, through, make the delivery. Now, the food delivery is a different story, obviously. They're gonna have a big semi come in and, and do that, but they're off hours. Like you say, they don't deliver in the middle of the day. Those, the, the, and those can be set. And that's how we've done a lot of businesses that I've, I've worked with. But the main point is these delivery trucks are just gonna be boom, boom, in and out, just like your Amazon drop did a delivery for you today, basically. They run up to the porch and throw things in and they're off, just, I just.
Wouldn't there be a business HOA to deal with all that?
There may be. I, I don't know the answer to that in Meridian's subdivision. Obviously that'd be a private matter that they'd be resolving.
Trash can be scheduled too, correct?
Yes, trash is.
Yes or no?
Early morning.
They, we, we have some that shows up at six o'clock in the morning and other days they show up at four in the afternoon. So yeah, you can't say, you can try, but.
We shouldn't hold them responsible for that.
No, we use Republican. Yeah, they use, they pick up our recycle at six in the morning sometimes. And today it was four in the afternoon.
So it sounds, it sounds like we're leaning towards tabling. Is that correct? And we're gonna go out a month?
It doesn't matter. We're gonna go two weeks or a month.
It sounded like a month. I mean, I, I'd, I'm kind of the point of calling the question that we're kind of going around and around unless there's something else to be addressed.
One more time, sure.
If it helps everyone, we, we can just do the month. Uh, and I don't have a problem with it. It, it will give us all the time to go ahead and make sure that we've done our homework better. Uh, that was our intent to come here, to come here prepared and there are open questions that we need to address. So I want to make sure we address that. So from my point of view, if that works for all of you, it works for me to do the month. I just want to make sure we have clarity on what to address during this month, because when we meet here, I, I know all of you and I as well want to come prepared that have addressed all of your question and all of your guidance.
And usually when a project comes to us, it's pretty much done. This one had just a bunch of stuff that was left out due to whatever. Uh, and that's what we're trying to solve for doing in next month. So, thank you.
Maybe when all you can get to maximize this space, more retail would be better for you and for us.
I do. Yes, yeah, I, I agree. So, uh, the way, I, I'm, I'm fine with the month and we can do that, but the way you can help me is to, to clearly understand what is expected of me during that month. So I know, for example.
I think Liz has a really good list.
Got 11 items so far.
Have we answered any of those in the last 10 minutes since you wrote it?
So in the staff report, the things that I've been keeping track of, so I'm gonna list them off and then if you guys could give me head nods or like, no. The things that I heard are that we need to better identify the mix for the uses. Um, the parking needs to meet the minimum.
Yep.
The minimum size.
Correct.
Um, and do we want to see an attempt to, um, make a shared parking agreement with some of the other businesses in the area?
I think you're gonna need it.
If possible, sure.
Gonna need it.
Okay. It could be something that maybe they don't finalize it, but are making headway and would that be acceptable? Um, it sounds like the loading and unloading zone is probably not interested by the planning commission.
I don't need to say.
I don't need to say it.
Okay. Um, it sounds like we do want to see a free scenes monument sign.
Location.
Location.
Location and materials.
Location, material size. Um, is it a desire of the planning commissioners to also see potential wall signs and the locations and placement for those as well as the square footage?
What the?
For the individual storefront.
I don't think, I don't think you can do that.
You could, but we wouldn't have to see them again, but.
Okay.
We're gonna see them again anyway, probably.
Um, the, one of the other comments was about the site trees. Um, as we discussed, they're slightly low on the site trees. As Rob mentioned too, there's some potential conflicts with utilities and other, um, important things that we don't want to put trees over. Is it a desire to see the minimum site trees met? Cause that would re, rearrange the landscaping.
I would like to see the trees, with the exception of those in the, the safety triangle concerns.
You want to see additional trees or you'd like to see the trees as they were presented?
I would like to see the minimum number of trees.
Minimum number of trees. Does everybody agree with that?
I think we have to. It's there for a reason.
I just talked about how much I love trees earlier. We need trees.
Okay.
Real quick for, I, I think Rob did make a good point about trimming those trees up in the site triangle. There's a, a period when the trees are small that, that may block views, but as, we know that as they grow up and you trim the tree limbs higher.
Yeah.
That that's acceptable. I, I think that's a reasonable option to help meet that requirement.
Okay. Um, the courtyard heat island stuff seems like it was relatively resolved. That sounds like it might be up to the businesses for umbrellas. Um, the last things were providing an irrigation plan, the site tree thing that we just talked about. Um, we're okay with the architecture, so there's nothing additional for that. Unless the planning commissioner wants to see something different with the architecture. Okay. Um, the dumpster concerns were that it, it, um, may not be consistent with the architectural elements. Um, partially from like a cler, probably a clerical error as far as what the colors are called. Um, and then adding an, an, uh, gate on the backside so that staff can access it.
Yes, please.
Okay. Um, and then the rest of this stuff is, um, the corrected plans with making sure that it's well communicated that, that there were changes on the plans and that the staff comments have been met as well as any of the, um, engineering comments are met. And that was the end of it. Does that all sound good or did I miss anything?
You feel good with that?
Can we address the lighting too? If we're redoing drawings, let's just make sure the lighting.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I missed that one.
And the site lighting, so redoing the photo metrics to better meet the code. Right, thank you.
Uh, I think there were obviously some other, other comments in the staff report that I kind of checked the box. They were acknowledged that they were easy cleanup items. So there wasn't every item on the list, just the high level that had broader impacts than just a fix.
Yeah, all of the items, just going through the timeline and the month we have, all of the items that Liz mentioned, uh, should fit just fine within, within that timeline. The, the one exception is engineering comments. Uh, it will, it will take us probably more time to go through. So I just want to make sure that when we come in a month, that if we address everything and, and at that time you would be comfortable providing with an approval pending, of course, addressing the engineering comments.
Okay, thank you.
Unless you throw us aside, sign, something bad, we're, we're done. We want to get it done tonight, but. Based on that, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion. We table a site plan review for lot six, lot seven, Meridian first subdivision to November 1st, 2021, to be held at the Wilson Leaper Center, 3800 Wilson Avenue at 6:30 PM.
Second.
Second by Rebecca. Roll call, please.
Mr. Kenny?
Yes.
White House.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Nick.
Yes.
Sardar.
Yes.
Friedrichs.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, it's table till next month. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you guys.
Appreciate your time. Uh, any announcements?
No, sir.
All right.
November, we'll have a work session again at 5:30.
You bet. Okay, meeting adjourned at 8:37. Thank you, guys.